Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly spirit, be with us tonight as we deliberate the issues of the evening. Guide us in our decision-making process as we represent our city. Give healing to all that are ill and recovering in our community and nation. Reduce the violence that we are exposed to throughout our nation. Give peace within our borders to all. Continue watching over the people of Ukraine in their fight for freedom. Protect the Americans being healed by the Russians. And help us in getting our people home. We ask for all of this in your holy name and let us all say, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of September the 7th, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Counsel motion be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
I second that, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We're now move to approval of the minutes from the March 2nd, 2022 work session and regular meeting. A motion would be in order. It was the pleasure of council. Councilman Johnson?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Williams?
Second that, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote.
Mayor, we need a motion prior to that, please?
No, we need a motion. Where's the motion? We're skipping the motion. It's gonna be a long night. Okay, a motion would be in order. It was the pleasure of council. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve that.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Vice Mayor Bennett? And we have a second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, there are no special presentations. We've been through there. Where are we? We're now moving to agenda speakers. See, y'all get me messed up. Are there any agenda speakers at this time?
Yes, Mayor Dooman. We do have individuals registered to speak under this portion of the agenda. Travis McKenny, 2804 Lake Cahoon Point, representing self regarding item 18, regarding the staff report, excuse me, 16, staff report, public safety update. Mr. McKenny, are you present? The next agenda speaker is Dr. Dawn Marie Brittingham, 7295 Harvest Drive, representing self regarding item number 16, staff report regarding public safety update. Dr. Brittingham, are you present?
Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and council members, and Chief Bowie. I want to address the council tonight about the safety update that Chief Bowie is going to be bringing. I want to add something to that to consider as he comes forward and presents. I was present for the June 29th meeting that City Council had for the Education Committee, and one of the considerations that came up during that meeting had to do with school safety. My understanding is the police department is well-prepared to deal with an active shooter situation, but I don't believe the school system is. And so I would like to find out what it is that City Council is doing to ensure that we are very prepared for something like this. I know the police department trains regularly and often. I know that they are prepared to train school and student, staff and students at schools. But my question is, has that happened? Is that something that is occurring? Are those conversations happening at all? You know, we're looking at our country, and we have seen that those things are happening on a regular basis. Is Suffolk ready for something like that to happen? I know our police department is ready, but it's not enough for them to be ready. Is our school ready? Are our administrators ready? Are our staff ready? Are our students ready for something like that? Does the police department have a program that they could bring forward to get staff and students ready? Because they should, and the City Council should have their full backing. I'm very concerned, after being in that meeting and what I heard, that we're not ready, and we need to be ready, and we need to put as many resources towards that because school safety is important. Kids can't go to school and learn if they don't believe that they're going to be safe in their schools. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate being able to come before you.
Jeff Brittingham, 7295 Harvest Drive, representing self regarding item number 16, staff report, public safety update.
Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor, members of council, Chief Bowie. I came to you today for public safety. As most of you already know, I've worked in EMS for our city for close to 20 years. I've also been a school teacher for nearly all of that time. So, the concern of what has been happening around our country in regards to school safety, our readiness, our preparedness, what we would do if we ended up in a situation like that, definitely concerns me on all fronts. Chief Bowie, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our city sent you to receive special training on just what to do for school safety. I believe you came back and you prepared our great officers for that very thing. I believe, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that you have developed programs for our administrative teams, for our teachers, for our kids at every single grade level, and have actually reached out and offered to teach that in our school system. So I don't know where the breakdown has happened. I know our police department is ready. I've worked with them. I know our teachers want the training. And what I'd like to see is, you know, council maybe put a little bit of pressure on whatever it would take to take that developed program and get it into our school systems. Because I love this city, and I don't want us to be the next national item in the news about what happened in our grade schools. Thank you.
That concludes the agenda speakers, Mayor.
That concludes our speakers. Madam Clerk, please present the items for consideration.
Consent agenda item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate Town Bank Community Grant for the City of Suffolk Sheriff's Department. Consent agenda item number eight, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for the Suffolk Victim Witness Assistance Program. Consent agenda item number nine, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Highway Safety Grant Program for the Suffolk Police Department. Consent agenda item number 10, in ordinance amending Section 66-283 of the Code of the City of Suffolk Regarding Military Leave. Consent agenda item number 11, in ordinance to correct clerical error in the title of ordinance number 220086, so that the corrected title reads, "In ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a school charter, private or parochial, on property located at 1444 Hoser Road, zoning map number 44, parcel number 127, and zoning map 45, parcel 21, account numbers 050071000 and 052088000 CUP 2022 014." Consent agenda item number 12, in ordinance to correct a clerical error in the title of ordinance number 220-085, so that the corrected title reads, "In ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a shooting range, outdoor on property located at 255 and 1444 Hoser Road, zoning map number 44, parcels 126 and 127, zoning map number 45, parcel 21, account numbers 050924184, 050071000, and 052088000 CUP 2022 002."
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in regards to item number seven, the city has received $1,100 from Town Bank in support of the Suffolk Sheriff's Department Community Outreach Program. The funding will be used to purchase backpacks. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the FY 2223 Consolidated Grants Fund Budget by $1,100. There is no local match. In regards to item eight, this is received $404,424 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services in support of the Suffolk Victim Witness Assistance Program. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the FY 2223 Consolidated Grants Fund Budget by $404,424. A local match of $68,087 is required, which is provided for within the adopted Consolidated Grants Fund Budget. In regards to item number nine, the city has received $27,142 from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles in support of overtime and training for alcohol traffic enforcement, and overtime for speeding enforcement for the Suffolk Police Department. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenue and expenditures of the FY 2223 Consolidated Grants Fund Budget by the $27,142. Local match of $13,571 of in-kind services is required, which is provided through fuel maintenance costs within the police department operating budget. In regards to item 10, it amends Section 66-283 of the Code of the City of Suffolk Regarding Military Leave. The change is to bring the code into accordance with state code, which has revised the amount of eligible compensable time from 15 days to 21 days. In regards to item 11 and 12, it corrects a clerical item in both ordinance titles regarding a parcel account number which was incorrect in the original ordinance. That account number is 050071000. It was incorrectly in the original ordinance as 05007100, missing a zero at the end, and that's the correction to that item. Item 12 is the same as item 11, correction. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
If there are no questions about the items, a motion be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor. Thank you.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no public hearings, ordinances, or resolutions this evening, and we will move to staff reports. Our first staff report is a public safety update. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight's public safety update will be provided by Major Bowie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager, and members of the public. I appreciate this opportunity to come give you an update on what the Suffolk Police Department is doing in reference to training for civilian active shooter training. It's a subject that's very passionate to me. We see it all over the country. It's going on, you know, we see it day to day, and I want everybody just to know that the Suffolk Police Department, it's our number one agenda to keep our citizens safe, to keep our students safe throughout every day. This is why we're here talking today. This is the last 20 years of active shooter events. 333 different events have occurred in the past 20 years with almost 3,000 casualties during those years. Different number of shooters, 345 total shooters, 332 being male, 13 being female. Where does this occur? The slide here will show that most of these incidents occur in business, open outdoor areas with pedestrian traffic, open spaces, and our schools pre-K through 12. We focus our training a lot for civilian active shooter to teach our public and our city employees what they can do in the event of an active shooter to better help themselves survive that incident. This chart here is why we focus on the areas that we focus. This is where most of the events occur. What is an active shooter? An active shooter event involves one or more persons engaged in killing or attempting to kill multiple people in an area occupied by multiple unrelated individuals. Here in the City of Suffolk, what do we teach our civilians for active shooter training? What we're trying to do with our citizens, so there's no misunderstandings, we're trying to give our citizens at least a 1% chance of survival in the event of an active shooter event. What we've learned and what we've taught throughout the years is that if we don't do anything during an active shooter event, then there's probably a 0% chance that we're going to survive that event, if we do nothing. What we teach as a police department is, we've all heard of the whole run, hide, fight theory. This is avoid, deny, defend. It's the same thing, but just a different name. Avoid is run. Deny is hide. And defend, if you have nothing left, is to fight. Avoid starts with the state of mind. We have to, we teach to pay attention to our surroundings. That's something that we don't do enough of. We see that when we go throughout our daily routines, that 90% of us have our heads buried in our phones, and we're not paying attention to what's going on around us. What we want to do is change that behavior and pay attention to our surroundings. Have an exit plan. If it goes bad today, we need to know how to get out of this room, how to get out of this building. If we don't know that, then we're going to spend the time trying to figure that out when the shooting is going on. We're going to waste those 10 to 15 seconds that we need to help save ourselves in the event of an actual shooting. Move away from the source of the threat as quickly as possible. We teach the best way not to get shot is to not be there. Do not be there. The more distance and barriers between you and the threat, the better. That's avoid. That's to run away. Deny. We can't run away. We can't run away. We have to hide. Hide in place, shelter in place. We keep distance between you and the source, create barriers to prevent or slow down a threat from getting to you. Turn off lights, remain out of sight and quiet by hiding behind large objects and silencing your phone. That's the deny portion of run, hide, fight. That's the hide part. We can't run away. We can't hide. Now we have to defend ourselves. We all have a right to defend ourselves. If you cannot avoid or deny, be prepared to defend yourself. Be aggressive and committed to your actions. Do not fight fairly. It's about your survival. These are what we teach in our active shooter classes when we teach civilians. We teach civilians what to do when the police arrive. When the police are telling you, put your hands up, move this way, move that way. We teach to listen to what they're telling you. Put your hands up so they can see them because hands are what are going to hurt them. These three simple steps, what we teach can help in a survival, can help you in a survival mode in your workplace, your church, your school, and other areas in your community. Know your surroundings. Have a plan if things go bad. Use your willpower and choose to survive. As of September 7th of this year, the Suffolk Police Department has taught 18 classes on civilian active shooter. Pre-COVID, we taught the entire city staff on civilian active shooter over a period of time, and this year alone, we've taught 18 different classes. We've taught those classes to city workers at Public Works, Public Utilities, library staff, healthcare facilities, at the Cultural Arts Center, and our social services personnel. We always, we also teach this class to any business that will put out to us that they would like to have this class. To our churches, to our, to Walmart, to Lowe's, any place that wants this training, we make ourselves available to provide this training to the general public whenever they want it. All we ask is that you do a speaker request, give us a good date and time, and we'll provide this training. Right now, we're doing it 100% of the time when it's requested. We'll continue to train city staff throughout the remainder of this year. We have actually a class in this room tomorrow that we'll be teaching civilian active shooter. So we'll continue to teach throughout the year until we get all of our staff trained on active shooter, and like I said, any other business or agency that wants it, we'll provide it free of charge. On August 18th of this year, police personnel met with school personnel at Colonel Fred Cherry School to go over the expectations for active shooter incidents. And our police personnel, they continue to train in our schools on police response, on active threats, incidents that occur in our school. We just recently sent our school resource officers to a specialized training to, for them to better learn what to do if they're in the school by themselves and this incident occurs, how to better prepare themselves to deal with that incident if it occurs. Any questions at this time?
Counsel questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Thanks, Major, for your presentation. You alluded on the last slide about going over to Fred Cherry to do some active shooter there. How many other schools have you been in so far?
To my nod to Colonel Fred Cherry, I was not present there, Mr. Fawcett, but from what I understand, Colonel Fred Cherry, it was principals of schools and administrators of schools that met with police personnel that were on scene with SROs to, for the schools to indicate, hey, this is their plan in the event of an active shooter, and this is the police response to that, so they can start working together to create future exercises with the schools and the police department.
So, you've been, you've given an opportunity to the school resources office in, maybe the principal or something you just said?
Well, there were different principals from different schools at that meeting. Yes, sir.
What about the other staff members, the teachers in the classrooms? Where are they getting that vital treatment and training? Because it's got to start at the lower level. If it doesn't get down to the student and the teacher, the rest of it goes to pot.
Yes, sir.
So, what are we doing? What is the school's response back to us that are, that are going after this training and getting our teachers and students up to speed? I've watched some of the other programs that are out there throughout the country, you know, after the Valdez in Texas and so on and so forth, and they've really ramped their training to where every student, every teacher, every janitor, everybody that's in that school knows exactly what to do. If the police department has it and the resource have it, that's not good enough. So what are we doing to get down? I know it's a school issue, and the school has their own little thing they can do, but are we getting cooperation from them to want to take this down to a lower level?
As far, as far as I know, Mr. Fawcett, I have personally not been involved with the training in the schools and what goes on with the schools with active threat. I'm more in the event of the civilian active shooter part of it, training the general public and our school, and our city personnel.
And this is not to put the Suffolk Police Department on the spot here, not one bit at all. It's to get more awareness that we need to go deeper into this program so we don't have a Texas shooting here in the City of Suffolk. If anybody thinks that we're, you know, have an illusion in their mind, this couldn't happen in my backyard, we need to get out of that mode real quick. So I'm hoping that we can find out what the school system's doing to get it down to the bottom line here of the other people within their school system, and that's every individual school in the city. But I appreciate what you're doing and what you have done, but I don't think that we've gone far enough.
I do know that the police department and the school system is working towards doing live-scale exercises at schools to get to that level. And as far as getting to the kids, that would be the last tier of that training, to say, the personnel are trained, the administrators are trained, your principals are trained, and then you start working on your school personnel and what they would do in the event of an active shooter.
Well, keep doing what you're doing. You guys are doing a great job. Keep working with them in the event they open up a little more and want us to go a little bit deeper with them. So we can partner with them and get in there and, and help them even more so. So, thank you for what you're doing and continue to do that.
Certainly.
And I think we're going to get some positive results from it in the event, which I hope never happens here, that we'll, you know, we'll get positive response from everybody involved to be aware.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Councilman Goldberg? On the 18 groups that you have taught, what's the, what's the sort of the demographics of that group? And how long was that training on each of those groups and so on like that?
And what we do here in our city, which is, I mean, it says something for our leadership in our city, is that we, the block of instruction for civilian active shooter that I teach is usually a two-hour block of instruction. A lot of jurisdictions and other agencies, they will put a link out for a five-minute or 10-minute video of run, hide, fight, and that checks the box to say, hey, we've had active shooter training here. We give, and at the, at the bare minimum, it's an hour of instruction, but usually it runs about a two-hour block of instruction. And we teach, I mean, demographics, I know for me personally, Councilman, I've taught churches, businesses, pharmacies, hospitals, healthcare facilities, civic leagues, homeowners associations, the city personnel here in the City of Suffolk. Even one time have gone to the City of Newport News to teach, to teach there the same thing that we teach here. So, we get a really good response from that training, and we have taught thousands of people, you know, since the inception, since we started teaching the civilian active shooter with our city personnel. And, I mean, I can't think of one place that we haven't been to teach civilian active shooter. Like before, if it's requested, then as of right now, 100% of the time, we deliver it. You know, that's, if we can do it, then we do it. Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Major Bowie, thank you for your presentation. I'm glad to hear that you are engaging with the schools to some extent. It would be nice to know that each individual school was receiving training from, obviously from the top down. Like you said, the students would be the last to be involved, but I would hope that our police department or the school system would reach out to the police department to ensure that each school is receiving similar training. I was also curious as to whether there have been any facility assessments as far as safety is concerned, to your knowledge.
Not to my knowledge. So I know that we've conducted some training with our personnel in the schools so they could become familiarized with the layout of our schools. And we always encourage our officers to go by our schools in every, every zone, which we call them, to get familiar with their school in case in the event, God forbid, we have to respond to a school that we have some education of what the school looks like inside. But we continue to train our, our police personnel within our different schools.
Okay. I appreciate everything that, that you're doing, and I would hope that these additional assessments come about within the school system and also, you know, come about within the school system and also, you know, in our facilities as well, where someone makes an assessment as to accessibility and just the other security options. Each building would be different, obviously. So I hope that comes about also.
We have conducted SEP TED assessments of every one of our city buildings. And we did it last, I think it was 29 or so SEP TEDs done, just for that reason, to see, you know, what security was like and what we could do to enhance it or make it better.
Okay.
And those evaluations, sir, were done after Virginia Beach's event.
Excellent.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions, counsel? If not, thank you for your presentation. Our next staff report will be a Route 58 update. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, as many people are aware, we've been under construction on Route 58 for quite some time now. I think Councilman Johnson could probably give you day-by-day information, but we thought it was a good time to give you an overall update on the project. And with us again is Robert Lewis, Director of Public Works. Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So as was introduced, we're a little over a year into this Holland Road construction project. As we originally envisioned it, we said it was going to be about a three-and-a-half-year project. So we're not quite a third of the way in yet, but did want to just give you an update on what's going on out there. So just a little bit of overview. If you remember, this had an overall budget of approximately $83.8 million. About $3.7 million of that went into the design, the preliminary engineering. We are approaching about $34 million in right-of-way costs. And again, some of that's still fluid because we are still negotiating with some property owners as far as final compensation. And at this point, the construction contract is set aside for about $45 million. Actually, the number you see is our budget number. Our contract is actually just a little bit less, and I think our contract was maybe $43 million. So again, we are well within the budget at this point in time. To date, we have not made any significant changes to the project that has affected costs. So the project is still fully within costs, has not had any escalation yet, and we are on budget. And we'll talk about that, I'm sorry, on time, and I'll talk about that just a little more in just a moment. So where did the funding come from? There's always a timely item. So out of this, about $34, almost $40 million of this is federal money that we were able to procure. About $17 million of it came out of the state coffers, and the city has kicked in almost $27 million in this project. So again, that mix is not uncommon for a project of this scope and the way things are funded. So again, $83.8 million total. What I'd like to do, I've got just a real short video montage for you, kind of an overview of what's going on in this project, and then we'll conclude.
The Route 58 widening project broke ground on June 3rd, 2021, and we are making steady progress. The contractor has not submitted any schedule impact analysis to add time to the contract, so at this point, we are on schedule for on-time completion in December of 2024. We have completed construction of the two temporary lanes on the north side of 58. Temporary signals have been installed, and earlier this month, we shifted all lanes of traffic north from Center Point to Grove Avenue. Grove Avenue marks a separation point in the project. The design calls for equal expansion on the north and south side of 58 west of Grove, whereas expansion east of Grove is concentrated on the north side only. Public Works has allowed rephasing of the project to assist the contractor with on-time completion. The rephasing allows the contractor to move forward with Phase 2 in the western section. With traffic shifted over the median, the contractor can work more freely on widening the south side. This work can continue without the need for daily lane closures. Presently, the contractor is working on storm drainage installation, water, and sanitary sewer improvements. Grading activities should be starting in the next few weeks. While Phase 2 continues to the west, the eastern section does not require construction of temporary lanes to accommodate a traffic shift. Therefore, the contractor will work through to Phase 3, which is ultimately the completion of the final road through this section. We can report that the culvert extension at Spates Run has been completed along with three storm water ponds, and the fourth and final pond is very near completion. Pond 4 has been graded and seeded, but we need to offset two pipes before it can become operational. We need to offset a 20-inch water main and a 10-inch sanitary force main to allow the storm water pipe to cross under the road from the north side of 58 to the drop inlet at Pond 4. Water and sewer offsets take significant time to complete due to coordination of service shutdowns with Public Utilities and the affected customers. Public Works has been working with the designer where possible to eliminate multiple water and sewer offsets by reconfiguring storm drainage. The current traffic pattern will remain for approximately the next 12 months. When the contractor has finished the south side widening through the western section, all lanes of traffic will shift to these newly finished lanes, allowing the contractor to complete the north side lanes and connect with the eastern section.
So as was noted in that, to date, we are back on schedule. So early on in the project, we did have a couple of little hiccups in there. There's something called COVID that just kind of messed all the supply chains up, and the contractor was like everybody else. He was struggling to have staff. So originally, when we talked about you, Phase 1, Phase 2 was going to be complete. It was all 3.1 miles from one end to the other. We're going to do a complete shift. The contractor came back to us and said, hey, I think I've got a little better idea that would allow us to make some time back up, get back on schedule. And that's where the idea of shifting the eastern end, Grove Avenue northwest to east to the bypass, to a little bit different configuration. We had that evaluated both by our staff, our consultant staff, and by VDOT staff. They agreed it was a good plan. We've since implemented that. The plan now shows everything back on schedule, and as I noted earlier, back on budget. So again, we just made this first shift from Phase 1 back in August. Phase 2 is underway. We anticipate that lasting for approximately a year. Phase 3, as was noted in the video, will kind of shift the lanes back, go back and finish the north side, because a lot of what was built on the north side where traffic is today is temporary. We had to do extra building over there to accommodate all the traffic until we could build some of the road. And then the final phase, Phase 4, everybody shifts to the outside, and we finish the medians in the middle, which should go relatively quickly. So with that, I believe that was my last slide. Yep. Any questions anyone may have, I'll certainly try to answer those for you.
Counsel? Councilman Johnson?
Knew I'd have a few questions, Robert.
Yes, sir.
It does seem much smoother now. Since we moved all the traffic to one side, things are moving along much better, except when we work up toward the bypass and shut down single lanes, which is one of the things that happened today.
Yes, sir.
But it is much better. But my main concern right now, we're hearing from everybody in the community, is the same question, and I've said something to you already so you could prepare a little bit. It's the safety issue. What's happening is with all four lanes traveling together over on the right side, when you're in that right lane trying to turn into a community, and you've got trucks going behind you at less than 35, right? That's the other problem, is the traffic, the speed. But we're seeing some rear ends because people are not, they don't have room to turn into the communities over on the right side of the road. And that's been the big concern. The other thing is people trying to get out of these communities are really struggling to get into the flow of traffic. Is there any way we can look at it that maybe we can come up with a little bit better plan to actually ease them into the lanes of traffic? I know now the school buses are kind of using the old road a bit, and I noticed today there was all kinds of things going on. But with the school buses coming on, we've just got to constantly be aware of the danger through the cars out there. And I know you're more aware of it than I am, but that's my main concern. And I'm sure it's going to be an ongoing concern for the next year as far as getting people safely, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm not putting words in your mouth. I'm just saying, it is such a concern. And the other problem that we have, and we all have it on 58, 35 is not working. We have got to do something and tell the public kind of what we're planning to do as far as getting that 35 speed to the point that people, if you don't do it, you get a ticket.
I certainly do not want to speak for the Suffolk Police Department, but the Public Works Department has worked very diligently to make sure, first, we lowered the speed limit.
Right.
To make it safer. Secondly, we've been back through again on three different occasions and reviewed all the signage out there to make sure absolutely every bit of sign is necessary to make that legally enforceable and defensible, and a court of law is there in place. And I can't speak to when the police department will or will not be enforcing it, but enforcement has already begun some. And again, they will continue, and there's actually some additional tools that will be coming online that we'll bring back to counsel in the next few months. They will also do some automated enforcement out there. So there's a lot of different things in the work. But yes, sir, we do, we from the design and the construction side have done all we can. We've actually brought our partners from VDOT back in and said, hey, would you guys take an independent review of this for us? Do you see any issues we have here with safety? And we got a clean okay back from VDOT. They concurred with the design and what's going on back there. So really, what it comes down to is driver attention and/or inattention. As had been noted before, I live on this corridor. I drive it every day.
Right.
And I will tell you, when I go to make a turn, probably half a mile before I get to where I'm going, I'm already got my turn light on, I'm already slowing down. Again, you've got to drive defensively out there, and there's a lot of people out there that are not looking out for their fellow man, a woman, or child. But again, we're doing all we can to try to keep it as safe as possible.
Well, and that's all, I want the public to be well aware that we are doing everything we can do, but what we also, they have to be a part of it. And I guess that's my point. And I'm not criticizing the police department. Don't, I am a little bit, because you don't have enough cars on the road. Every time a car's on the road and the public sees a police car on the side of the road, they slow down. So it's my intent is to keep pushing this point, Major Bowie, as long as we can to get more police units on 58 for at least a duration of this project, because that's going to help. I mean, we just need to see a presence out there. And like Robert knows, these people don't, the trucks don't slow down, the cars don't slow down, but they need to slow down when you're putting this many vehicles on one path. But I do appreciate what you're doing, and I know you guys are on top of it better than we are, but we are, it's a constant struggle with the people that are on that road every day.
Yes, sir. And one other thing I would note for that as we talk about speed enforcement, I personally would not want to get one of those tickets because, again, we've declared that a high fine work zone. So if you get sighted out there, you're going to get the normal speeding ticket, and then it's a $500 additional fine added on top of that. And I do know the police department has written a few of those. So again, it's going to hit people significantly. I guess people don't believe the police department's going to be there, but we have put things in place to significantly get the attention of the drivers and say, please slow down, please drive carefully. It's only 3.1 miles. It's not the end of the day. There are ways around it if you're local and you know how to get around. But again, please slow down and take your time, and let's be all safe.
Well, and just recognize our city employees are out there as well with trash pickup, grass cutting, the school buses. It really is a dangerous corridor, and anyone in the state will tell you that. So the citizens need to recognize it and stay on top of things and report things when you see them, correct?
Correct.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments for Mr. Lewis? If not, thank you very, oh, I'm sorry, push your button there. Here we go.
Well, I have one, not on 58. I wanted to give everybody the opportunity to go on 58 after that was your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Because also with the truck traffic there on Shores Hill Road, I understand that Amazon now has got the instruction that they can't use Portion Boulevard. Is that correct?
I was privy to some email conversations today that apparently somewhere along the way, Amazon had gotten some incorrect information and had purposely rid of their trucks places they probably should not have been, and that has now been shared with their shipping managers. And again, one of the things I learned from this that I didn't realize is Amazon, these trucks that are coming in, they actually have GPS writing equipment in those trucks that they contract with to tell them where to go and how to get there, and they are modifying their writing to bring them up and down Portion Boulevard back to 664 and try to minimize the impact on any of the other roads in the area. So the email I said, just said, please give us a day or two. It might take a day or two for this kinks to work out of the system, but they have committed to try to make that a better, safer opportunity.
I do appreciate doing that work with them. Also, the flyover with Willroy and Nassau Parkway, there's been a lot of concern with the trains and all that and the traffic being backed up.
Yes, sir. So we are in the midst of acquiring the right-of-way right now. Most of that has been done. We are planning to advertise that job in January of '23, so just, what is that, four months, three and a half months away? It'll go to ad. And the intent is, if everything, the bids all come back and stay in budget, that it would go to construction or award that construction contract in April. So that's April of '23. And at this point, the construction is anticipated to take two years, so 24 months. There's significant coordination with the railroad. It's a whole, to be honest, it's a whole lot easier to build a bridge over a big river than it is over railroad track. So again, we are two years out on construction as far as timeline. So that would put us roughly April of, what is that, '25, having that project completed.
Okay. That's good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
If you would, I could give you a real quick update also on Bennett's pasture and Nassau Parkway.
Yeah, please do.
Again, we are planning for that to go to advertisement in March. We are requiring right-of-way on that right now, too. Again, the vast majority of that has been acquired, so that will go to advertisement this coming March, and hopefully will be awarded by June of '23. So just a few months away, and that's about a year and a half timetable on that. So again, it kind of puts it in that 24 timeframe finishing up. But again, both of those projects are on schedule and on budget at this time with no anticipated hiccups. But again, we still have the most interesting and challenging part of that, which is the bid, to make sure in today's world that bids stay within our budget.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments?
Hearing none. Mr. Lewis, thank you very much, sir.
Sir.
Okay. We'll now move to motions. We have several motions this evening. The first is a motion to schedule a public hearing for September 21st, 2022, to receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and/or temporary easements either by agreement or condemnation for the Freeman Mill Road Bridge Replacement Project. A motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams?
Second, Ed, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion has been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
So move.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Johnson, Councilman Ward?
Second.
Second from Councilman Ward. Is any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
We do have non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "non-agenda speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before a city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Erin Clemo, 113 Pitch Kettle Point Drive, representing self regarding Port 460.
Good evening. I have a tally of the petition. We are up to 1,947 signatures just say no to warehouses in our neighborhood. Mayor Duman, council members, my name is Erin Clemo, and I live at 113 Pitch Kettle Point Drive. I want to start by asking you to think about your most prized possession. Like most people, for me, it's my child. When it comes to Port 460, I hear a lot of talk about tax revenue and how we're going to try to get money for improvements, but I don't hear much about protecting our children from the danger that Port 460 will bring. According to Suffolk Public Schools, there are 82 bus trips each morning on Route 460. Isle of Wight Academy has another five buses that use 460 as well. That is 87 buses each morning, a total of 174 bus trips between morning and evening peak hours. That does not include the ones going to NSA. not include the ones going to NSA. Let me break the numbers down even further. You have six elementary buses, 32 middle school buses, 38 high school buses, six going to college and career academy, between 200 to 250 teenagers driving themselves to Kings Fork High School. The developer estimates that Port 460 will add about 2,000 total vehicle trips, including about 300 truck trips to the peak AM and PM traffic volumes. That traffic will come, will be coming off the exit onto fifth, excuse me, on 58 and quickly jumping across three lanes of traffic on a short stretch of road that's already congested and way too dangerous. Combining high-volume truck traffic, executing a dangerous lane shift with concentrated school bus traffic is a recipe for disaster. On top of that, add inexperienced teenage drivers and tired parents taking their kids to school, and the danger gets remarkably worse. Exactly what will be done to prevent these disasters and when? I've heard some of you say the trucks are coming whether we approve Fort 60 or not. How in the world can anybody thinks this makes sense? How can anybody not see that trucks passing through on the way to somewhere is not the same as thousands of trucks not using the same, or using the same exit and changing lanes in less than a third of a mile under the pressure of heavy traffic? It is not the same, and we know it's not. It is not just the intersection of 460 and 58 that will be impacted. The plan calls for widening Pitch Kettle Road near the intersection with Kings Fork. I believe the intent is for trucks and cars to exit onto Pitch Kettle and come around Kings Fork to 460. Yesterday, the first day of school for the Suffolk Public Schools, a gentleman that lives in that area counted 240 cars, 13 school buses, and five trucks, which is not supposed to be on Pitch Kettle, between 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. That is the current, that is current traffic during non-peak hours. What kind of disaster is this going to bring when this project is in full swing? As you decide how to vote on this rezoning, I urge you to please remember that Port 460 will pose real risks to our children and to our grandchildren. These are the same children who, years from now, will be sitting in your seats, dealing with consequences of your decision. We are counting on you to protect them by voting no to this request. Thank you for your time.
Andrea Perotti, 2655 Riverwatch Drive, representing self regarding Port 460.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name's Dr. Andy Perotti, and I'm here to have a request respectfully, that we look at this subject in a delayed fashion. I'm requesting that by the end of my presentation, you will give some consideration to that. The last number of meetings that I've attended in regard to this question was not only frustrating, I think, for all of us, but also very enlightening. I did appreciate when Mr. Mayor said he was going to be looking into the facts that had been presented. I think you all can recognize that the people that have presented have done so not only reflecting the passion they have for their concerns that are very valid, as well as the science from one of the physicians about, you know, peer-reviewed literature, things regarding, you know, the effect on the buildings, the effects on a lot of things. We hear even, Amazon's having a little, you know, break-in period. Well, we would expect that. But that's a $1 million facility, 1 million square foot facility. This one's five times bigger. So there, the break-in period might be a little more dramatic. In general, I will say that we all have one thing in common in this group. We really don't want this warehouse. And it isn't because we don't want to support the port. I was concerned, and my background is as a researcher and as teaching research, I always take a question and, you know, kind of bear it down, almost like peeling an onion. And I kept saying, what is bothering me about all of this kind of consternation about this question about the warehouse? Yes, it's a monumental problem because of just its size alone. That makes it highly unique. But what is it we're actually trying to do? I was concerned about, what is the basic question? And I thought, you know, I don't think I've ever heard what that is. And I think the basics that I'm making an assumption of is that we are here to try to support the port. And I see the nice lady from the port is in the back. We've discussed this just very briefly. We want to support the port. We don't see the warehouse as the answer. Why do we say that? I looked at, what is it about the warehouse that is beneficial to the community? My perspective, I can't think of anything. It's lipstick on a pig when we're talking about the shrubs in the bushes and the, I don't see it. But what we do have to say is, what is it we can do for the port and for this community and the region as a whole? We recognize that with climate change, we've got issues with the breadbasket of America essentially being up in flames. What are we doing to support our farmers? Well, we're buying up all their property. We're not supporting farmers that we actually have that want to maintain their family farms. This is a concern, a big one. Those farms are going to be a lot more valuable as more and more, unfortunately, the climate is dictating, the areas where I used to live for a while in Southern California are no longer able to really produce to support us. We have a lot of other deficits that we have to recognize. And I don't want to belabor them because they've done a great job in terms of presenting them. What I'm asking you to do is, let's think of a different way where you have a win-win situation. The win is help the port. The win for the community is, I think the warehouse is the wrong answer. The question that I come up with is, what is the problem? The problem is, you have a lot of stuff floating around out in the bay. You want to get it offloaded, and you want to be able to get it and move it and be able to free up our logistics tail. It's extremely important. They're highly effective at doing that. They're expert in it. They have very strong ties to good science in terms of how they manage currently. But what they need to do is go back to square one. And when I'm teaching research, we have to sometimes, and when I've done this with engineers or with our medical teams that I've worked with, is say, you forget about the very first step of research. When you don't know the answer to what is real, you have to do qualitative standback. You have to hear, what is the lived experience of those around? We skipped that part. These are the people who have the lived experience of the neighborhood that is in threat. The issue is, we've got to help them move that cargo, not as a shell game where it just gets put into a warehouse, where volume off the water becomes volume on land and then has to be, again, re-mechanized and made to be moved out. And we're talking about all the truckers coming here. Well, there's a couple of questions I had. Is it really wise in the long range to warehouse things in an environment that has the fragility in terms of its, its climate and its land that equals that of New Orleans? In other words, if there's a place you don't want long-term storage, this is it. This is it, as compared to maybe Atlanta, Philadelphia. I had mentioned to, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but the nice, the nice lady from the port that, you know, if we were-
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time's expired. They just reminded me. I was listening.
Okay. Um, let me just close that the bottom line is, let's look at transportation issues, readily available resources that are not only able to be supported through new federal funding, but that's it, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Jean Carmine, 3616 Labrador Lane, representing self regarding Port 460.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, this proposed 460 logistics center is just three and a half miles from our historic downtown district, the gateway to our city. Heritage tourism is an important driver in the economy in Virginia. Virginia is one of the top 10 states in the United States for heritage tourism, generating $2 billion in state and local taxes, and collectively spending almost $7.7 billion annually. We are sitting on a gold mine here in Suffolk. Suffolk is a great city. We should be planning for long-term gain. To put warehouses and increase truck traffic at our gateway will surely destroy the culture of this beautiful city and have a negative impact on attracting tourists. Please hear the pleas of the citizens and vote no to Port 460. We deserve better. Thank you very much for your time.
Rod Thompson, 9313 Eclipse Drive, representing self regarding the role of public service with relation to hot-button topics like the Port 460 project, gentrification in the public school system.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel. Senator Margaret Smith, one of the pioneering female politicians of the mid-20th century, once said, "My creed is that public service must be more than doing a job efficiently and honestly. It must be a complete dedication to the people and to the nation with full recognition that every human being is entitled to courtesy and consideration. That constructive criticism is not only to be expected but sought, that smears are not only to be expected but fought, and that honor is to be earned, not bought." I stand here today as a citizen, one of the people with a capital P, and you sit there as a public servant with a lowercase s. If we're adhering to Senator Chase's words, as one would hope in any situation with trusted elected officials, I should probe the hearts and minds of each and every one of you. With regards to the governance and the growth of Suffolk, have you ever fully measured your dedication to her people with consideration of their constructive criticism and the courtesy to understand their points of view? Are you truly serving the people of Suffolk, or are you simply nodding your head at tax dollars and calling it growth? The city that you were elected to govern will soon be, soon become the overcrowded burg that you'll forever be dejected for. Our legacies only go as far as our greatest, our greatest successes or our most egregious missteps. But your missteps don't simply affect you. They affect every citizen of Suffolk, present and future. In last month's public hearing, we heard facts and we heard subjective feelings from people, from the people. Councilman Johnson understood each word, and his convictions guided him to side with the nays, while three other council members seemed to dance around the fact that their minds were already made up about the Port 460 project and the other potential rezonings, made up before, during, and after all of the evidence that was laid before then. I'm not trying to detract from Mr. Williams' potential payday, but the man himself said that he's selling his land so that he can do what again? That's right, move to a more rural area to farm. The owner of the Academy Animal Care, a man who spent more time in veterinary school than some of you have spent in city government, asked simply for more research planning and transparency. Dr. Chase spoke about his personal tax investment in the coffers in the city of Suffolk since opening his business in 2010, and how the traffic from Port 460 would impact his business, to which Councilman Fawcett replied at the end of the night with an overarching, whether you like it or not, the trucks are coming, because you're up there and we're out here, and that's just the way it is. As a person who has served in a position of power, that is absolutely the worst thing you can say to the people who are trusting you to do right by them. You were elected to change the way it is. Otherwise, we would have left your predecessors in place or chosen your opponents at the polls. While you're, while we're talking about the way it is, let's talk about the current truck traffic on Kings Fork Road. You have fully loaded dump trucks and 18-wheelers barreling down Bulldog Row as a cut-through connector between 10 and 460 instead of using 58 as intended. This is a residential area with two school zones and the home of SYA Sports Complex, not an industrial shipping route. What do you think is going to happen when the trucks that are coming, whether we like it or not, actually have a new destination at Port 460? Many citizens believe this council to have tunnel vision. They say that the city has focused strictly on what it takes to describe and sell Port 460 and limited its analysis to the immediate vicinity of the project. No evaluation of traffic impact for miles up and down 460 and 58, much less the road improvements needed to mitigate those impacts. No crash study to assess the project's impact on accident and fatality risk up and down 460 and 58. How can anyone say Port 460 is what's best for Suffolk when its pros and cons have not been compared to any other alternative? And if those comparisons have been made, or those studies have been conducted, why do the citizens in control of this city not have that information? Why are we broadcasting our objections in the blind? Mayor Duman, the position of leadership is heavy. I know. Whatever happens and however the council votes, this legacy falls on you, sir. No one's going to remember Councilman Goldberg. No one's going to remember Councilman Fawcett. But the mayors are always remembered. The downfall or rise of any city floats solely upon the name of its mayor. This is about more than Port 460. This is about the future where a dad hurrying home to his kid's ballgame isn't stuck in gridlocked traffic on Bridge Road for the sake of smart-scale money. And this page in Suffolk's history, is this page in Suffolk's history an episode of the do man can, or is it more like the do man sort of tried but let us down? You want to talk about credit checks and the household income of Suffolk residents, but what has this council done to improve those incomes? What has this body done to put other governmental bodies, i.e. the school board, in check? This is your ship to sink, Mr. Mayor. The whole of Suffolk trusted you, they elected you, and we're all asking, all we're asking is for this body to do the right thing by us. Instead of suckling from the Richmond and Port of VA money teats for roads and new stoplights, let's work on empowering and uplifting residents of those food deserts that will be gentrified from rezoning. Let's ask why our SOL scores are abysmal, a word most Suffolk high schoolers may or may not know the definition of. Let's reinvest in ourselves and our people by listening to their concerns. And if you tell me there's no money to reinvest in this city without outside support from the state or the federal, well, by God, then it's time to take a look at our house and figure out which rooms need to be cleaned. In closing, I will say that I respect every last one of you, and I would not want the responsibility of the decision you have to make. I keep praying that you'll do the right thing because you're all honorable citizens chosen by the people with a capital P of Suffolk to do the right thing by us. And we're hoping you're all listening. Thank you.
Darlene Simpson, 204 Sumner Avenue, Darlene Simpson, 204 Sumner Avenue, representing self regarding Port 460.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Simpson. I live at 204 Sumner Avenue with my husband, and we have been citizens of this lovely town for over 45 years. So I'm a transplant, but I really love it. Now, we live off of Hamburger Alley, which is Route 58. It has become an Audubon. The vibrations from the trucks, as they hit the bottom of the hill, can be felt all the way to my house, which is at the end of the street on the cul-de-sac. Also, I have friends who live at the stoplight at the top of Oak Ridge Grove Avenue, whose chandeliers have fallen off the ceilings and who have cracks in the walls. I've also talked to a business on Route 48, I mean, I'm sorry, Route 58, that we couldn't even hear each other standing at the door. And when I got in, her computer shook. So vibrations from the trucks and the heavy traffic is a problem. Now, I'll go on to something else. The proposed rezoning of this beautiful piece of property will make it just another concrete jungle of 5 million square feet of warehouses that will be bounded on Route 460, Route 58, as well as Pitch Kettle Road, Kings Fork Road, Route 460, and Route 58. They are the evacuation routes in case of emergencies such as hurricanes, fires, any type of emergency. It will be backed up with the tractor-trailers, with the citizens trying to get out of harm's way. So will the widening help that? We don't know. But the problem is, if, if you do widen it, you're going to bottleneck right there at Providence Church. So all the other 460 businesses, people trying to get out of harm's way, everything will be, you know, backed up to the interstates. Many small businesses locally owned are on both sides of this Route 460, along with two schools, an animal hospital, funeral homes, small stores, gas stations, an animal grooming shop, okay, which is about a total of 38 to 40 small businesses on Route 6- grooming shop, which is about a total of 38 to 40 small businesses on Route 60, on that little stretch of road. So do they not bring in revenue enough for you all for taxes? Not sure. The project will cause increased tractor-trailer and vehicle traffic on an already overcrowded, underbuilt road that is not prepared to handle it. Route 460 is one of the most dangerous roads in the state. Four narrow lanes, two going one way and two coming into the city. Let me go on to... Okay. The city of Suffolk is again trying to revive downtown. A new library is to be built, several new parks, and this all sounds wonderful. And it is on paper. And it would be if you're not going to be traveling to get there. Traffic will be overloaded and backed up on Route 460 and 58 from increased 18-wheel truck traffic. Who wants to be living and doing business, shopping uptown and driving in a warehouse district? Not me. Who wants to fight a Northern Virginia-type traffic to get to a library? The new one would be nice, to be able to read the books and check them out. But I'm not coming up here to do that, to shop or to a festival. Who wants to worry about our school buses full of children having an accident when a truck cannot stop and goes through the traffic light? I've seen this happen in front of Nanceman Suffolk Academy. There are so many negatives with this project. This is just a few of them. And what are the reasons? What is the reasons for this? The warehouses? No. Our area is about to lose one of its most valuable assets, which is the farmlands, the small-town appeal, and many small businesses. The acreage could be put to a better use. The benefits of the property far outweigh what will be unreparable and a scar on this city. Once the asphalt and concrete is laid, the trees gone, the wildlife moved or destroyed, the water polluted, there is no turning back. The Route 58 project has proven that the city needs to do better, prepare the infrastructure for the roads before biting off more than it can chew. Let's see. And I'm tired of playing catch-up on it. I'm one of those people that have impossible time getting out of my little Falk Avenue to get into the traffic. It has been blocked horribly this whole summer. I wonder how many of you will be staying in this area, driving these roads if the Port 460 project goes on? Or will you move away, retire to another area, a better place?
I'm sorry, ma'am. That concludes your time.
Well, hopefully, you all will be proud of your decision, okay? And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Travis McKenney, 2804 Lake Cahoon Point, representing self regarding student safety. Next speaker is Elizabeth Thornton, 1020 Myrtle Street, representing self regarding... Oh. All right, Mr. McKenney, 2804 Lake Cahoon Point, representing self regarding student safety.
Good evening. Apologize for being a little bit late, a little bit quick with that name call in tonight. How y'all doing? Again, I've been here in front of you before. Last time I talked to you was a little bit off the head, and tonight's going to be a little bit off the head also. I had thought about this whole issue about student safety, school board safety, and all these, you know, all these things going on. But life came along and distracted me a little bit, right? Things happen in life, kind of put us off our normal routine. So here we are at the start of a new school year, and everything's a little chaotic. Things are not a little routine. We've got to get the kids back to school. Schools got to come back together, got to get into a little bit of the rhythm of a routine. And I was sitting there thinking about this. The first thing that dawned on me when I was paying attention earlier is, where is our school representation here? Where's our superintendent? Where's our school board? Why aren't they part of the conversation as far as school security? And the reason why is because it's not a routine. We don't want to look at violence in our school systems as something that we have to address. We don't want to look at an active shooter possibility in our schools as something that we just don't want to think about, we don't want to contemplate. It's not routine in our lives. But our school systems have got to figure out how to start bringing security and make it more routine into our systems. This is a must-have thing in the society that we live in today. When you have random acts of violence and you have people who purposely go out to plan to do harm, you have to have security measures in place. It has to become routine. You look at the Texas incident where things became complacent. Everything that could go wrong went wrong in Texas. We left doors open. We didn't know how to secure it. We didn't have access to the building. The police response didn't have some type of leadership to take charge and take control of the situation. Things became complacent. We lost the routine of security. So I don't understand why the school is not here tonight to pay attention to some of the concerns that parents are bringing to you. You know, the police chief was talking about emergency action plans. Well, what is the school's emergency action plan? Are we going to rely on that one sole officer to rush bravely in to try to solve a problem? We got SSOs. And in case you don't know, SSOs are security officers, but they're not armed. How are they going to respond? How are they going to respond to the police? Does anybody have a coordinated action plan together to work? I heard one question come out, is what school system has been involved? And I believe I heard a couple of principals came out to one school and had a discussion. And that's not good enough. For security to work, it has to become routine into our school. It has to become routine into our life. We may not like that as a society. We kind of reject it. I didn't grow up in that atmosphere. I imagine none of you did either. But here we are today. I would ask this council here to start putting pressure on our school board, and somebody called the superintendent to this and say, "Look, this needs to be routine. We need to start interacting as a city." They love to make the statement, "It takes the village to raise a child." I want to make the statement, "It takes the village to protect a child as well." We have to get the school board included. We have to get the superintendent on board. Right now, the superintendent's wrapped up with having kids push little emojis to give them the feeling of the day. Wait until you hear that conversation. If you don't make it routine, you don't make it important, it's not going to happen. And then if a tragedy does happen, you're not going to be prepared for it. And then you're going to have more than this group of citizens here standing in front of you, asking why something wasn't fixed. So that's what I ask the city council. Demand that school board, demand that superintendent to make security routine, demand that they participate with the police. Thank you.
Elizabeth Thornton, 1020 Myrtle Street, representing self regarding Port 460. Chris Dove, 852 Colonel Mead Drive, representing self regarding State Conflict of Interest Act.
Good evening. The way this council, our council, treats conflict of interest is inconsistent. The previous mayor voted on numerous rezonings and impacted her business partner and never submitted a conflict of interest determination, possibly making millions of dollars for her business partner over the years. The current mayor had a conflict of interest. He asked the city's attorney opinion, and then submitted all the facts to the Conflict of Interest Council, and they determined there was no conflict of interest. In January 2021, a council member with a pre-existing contract with the city had an attorney request a conflict of interest determination. The Conflict of Interest Council again determined no conflict of interest existed. Even so, council voted to deny a renewal of the contract because of the mere appearance of a conflict of interest. The following month, another council member sought a contract with the city. During this council meeting, council members actively sought the opinion of the city attorney. And once again, no conflict of interest was determined to exist. But this time, the apparent conflict of interest was not an issue. Council voted unanimously to allow the contract. Two weeks ago, it was brought to light that another council member had a conflict of interest. I was surprised the council member did not seek the city attorney's opinion or that of the Conflict of Interest Council before the transaction, in the same ways that others had done. During this meeting, no one sought the opinion of the city attorney. Facts were presented, and the council member had an opportunity to make the required declaration of a conflict of interest in a transaction. He failed to do so. Instead, he voted on the transaction as if he had made the required declaration. This flyer, that you all should be familiar with, since I sent a copy to each of you and the city attorney, is proof of that conflict of interest in the transaction. All of you and the city attorney received it, like I said, and I question how many of you have asked the opinion of the city attorney on the conflict? Or is the council member submitting the facts, including that flyer, to the Conflict of Interest Council after the fact? Why is one council member held to a more stringent standard of even an appearance of conflict of interest, while another council member is not held to any standard at all? Shouldn't the provision of the open... or shouldn't the process of an open and transparent government allow the public to see this as it happens, instead of finding out later? Another issue. Legal, it came to my notice that I was concerned that the city intended to use the... excuse me. eminent domain on property belonging Route 460 in order to widen the roadway specifically for the benefit of Port 460 Logistics Center project. The Code of Virginia states, "Property can only be taken where the public interest dominates the private gain, and the primary purpose is not private financial gain, private benefit, an increase in tax base or tax revenues, an increase in employment, or economic development." The Route 460 widening is all these things. It is projected to incur a public debt of over $100 million. Public interest clearly does not dominate. The primary stated purpose for using the eminent domain to widen 460 is for the private financial gain and benefit of the Port 460 project. It is to increase taxes. It is to produce 9,000 jobs and the economic development of 5 million square feet of warehouse space. I strongly urge all of those businesses affected by the Port 460 widening to ask their attorneys to review the limitations on eminent domain. I ask any council member to request the opinion of our city attorney now and in public, whether the stated purpose of the use of eminent domain to widen Route 460 violates the Code of Virginia, Title 1, Chapter 2.1, Article 2, Section 1.219.1, Subsection D, as it clearly appears. And as another note, I would say that council concerned with public safety should go ahead and probably fund those public schools so they don't have so many students in the trailers outside of the school.
I'm sorry, sir. That concludes your time. Thank you.
Nancy White, 375 Turlington Road, representing self regarding Port 460. Jeffrey Payne, 120 Northgate Lane, representing self regarding Port 460.
Jeff Payne, don't be fooled by the accent. I've lived in Suffolk for 37 years and paid taxes, every one of them. While I endorse much of what's been said this evening and previously to you, my major concern surrounds the wisdom of rezoning the land for warehousing in the current economic climate. Inflation is crippling the U.S. and world economics. Many talk of impending recession. Now, a large percentage of the goods stored in warehouses in America has come from China. Now, tensions with China seem to have increased somewhat, especially as they've now aligned with Russia over the Ukraine situation. So do you really think that shipments from China are going to stay at current levels in the current circumstances? I think not. Suffolk has major retail companies with big distribution warehouses, Amazon and Target. Both corporations in recent weeks have stated that they are excessively... they have excessively high inventories, and they need to reduce them as the economy slows. They are not increasing warehouse capacity. They are looking to decrease it. A Fortune magazine article came out five days ago. I'll read you the headline, and I'll leave this for you. "Amazon Closes or Abandons Plans for Dozens of Warehouses As It Goes From Expansion Mode to Belt Tightening." This was written five days ago. I'll read you a few excerpts. "The company has shuttered or killed plans to open 42 facilities totaling 25 million square feet of usable space. The company has delayed an additional 21 locations totaling nearly 28 million square feet." "The chief executive officer, Andy Jassy, says that during the second quarter of this year, Amazon's workforce shrank by 100,000 jobs, the biggest quarter-to-quarter contraction in the history of the company." "The Seattle company has also been seeking to sublease at least 10 million square feet of its warehouse space. It has more warehouse space than it needs." That's what's going on in the industry. I hope you'll take this article and read the rest of it. Is this the reason why the Suffolk-Amazon warehouse seems to be slow in opening and getting going? Is that one of the ones that has fallen foul of the current economic situation? How much of their space will be subleased? How much of that could be used by companies instead of building new warehouses? You know, perhaps the CEO, Amazon's CEO, knows more about warehousing than I do, and I suspect he knows more about warehousing than you do. So is this developer taking a risk putting in new warehousing when Amazon and Target are shrinking? I don't think they're taking a risk, because if you rezone this land to M2 heavy industrial, they have that land. They don't have to build a single warehouse. If they decide that the economic situation has changed, they can just sell the land on. It says so in the contract. And what control will you have when it's already zoned M2 and we're not building warehouses now? Maybe somebody's going to build a chemical plant or a major manufacturing facility with noise and dust and smells and who knows what. You will have very little control over that once you've rezoned it to M2. So I think this is very low risk for the developer. He's got nothing to lose in this. You're giving him a valuable piece of land which he can just sell on. It says so in the contract. Yet you will have committed by signing the contract and rezoning this to spend tens of millions of taxpayer money, our money, to build roads for a non-existent project, and then subject the citizens to the constant delays during construction that we're seeing out on 58. It takes years to put in what they would need.
I'm sorry, sir. That concludes your time.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Next speaker is Stuart Boyce. The next speaker is Stuart Boyce, 5121 Indian Trail, representing self regarding Port 460.
Hello. My name is Stuart Wayne Boyce. I live at 5121 Indian Trail, Suffolk, Virginia, in the Holy Neck Borough. Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Bennett, and Councilman, I'm here to ask you to vote no on the Port 460 project. At one of the last two meetings, Mr. Jesse Williams, owner of the 510 acres, stated he was a fourth-generation resident of the city of Suffolk. He said he and his family were going to continue farming somewhere else other than Suffolk because he wanted to go somewhere more rural. If Suffolk can't keep fourth-generation families here, how are we going to keep future generations here? here? I'm a third-generation citizen of Suffolk. My grandfather was a carpenter, my dad a plumber, and I worked at Dominion Energy for 38 years in Suffolk. But unlike Mr. Williams, I plan on staying in Suffolk forever and pray that our leaders make good decisions so this city continues to be a great place to live for my family and all the citizens of Suffolk. The rezoning of Mr. Williams' 510 acres for these 10 warehouses is just not right for this area of Suffolk. Some people would say, we just don't want this in our backyard. But this area is not our backyard. This is our front yard, one of the four roads to historic downtown Suffolk, the heart of our city. Route 58, Route 32, and Route 13 already have warehouses with some under construction right now. Please don't mess up the Route 460 entrance with warehouses too. This area would be great for some type of entertainment, something our children could do and enjoy, some type of water park, jogging track, a shopping area, restaurants, but we don't need to rezone 500 acres of farmland. If we need these warehouses to help us and the port, maybe there's a way something could be worked out to put them on Warehouse Alley on Route 58 where council already approved for warehouses. Maybe that way the trucks would stay on Route 58 since the developers said the trucks would be headed west on Route 58. But in reality, nobody knows which way these drivers will be going. Already, they seem to love the road I live on, Indian Trail, which is being torn up every day by truckers who must have failed the roadside part of their driving test. But really, we don't want Suffolk to be labeled as the warehouse capital of the world, or Route 58 being called Suicide Strip. Please protect our teenage new drivers and old drivers like us. At the last council meeting, Mayor Dooman spoke about how nice the maintained company team had been to work with, and I'm sure they are nice people, but just remember, they are salesmen, hoping we will buy what they are selling. After we buy, they will go back to their homes in another city or state with a smile on their faces, just like all the other developers that I've seen leaving this council chamber after they get a yes vote. They don't care about Suffolk or its citizens. I happen to know one of the developers who develops here in Suffolk. At one of these meetings, I asked him what he thought about the Port 460 project, and he said he didn't care about the Port 460 rezoning as long as his project passed, which it did, and he left smiling. We don't need those kind of developers. The maintained company showed us some pictures at the last meeting of what the warehouses and landscaping could look like, but we saw no pictures of any trucks or containers that are parked all around these warehouses. Do you think that they are planning on hiding these inside these warehouses? I don't think so. If you want to see what it looks like, go out to the Virginia Commerce Center, Kenyon Road, and along Route 58, look at the eyesore, and they haven't even gotten started. Plus, just think about all these trucks and containers sitting all over our city, waiting for loads like the trucks sitting already at what I call the Walmart campground. Is this what you want, our city? No. I remember back when Kenyon Road project was trying to get off the ground, a CSX exec came with a donation which was a welcome surprise for a nonprofit organization I belong to. He said CSX wanted to be part of the community and hoped this would help our organization. He asked me what I thought of the Kenyon Road project. I told him that these warehouses should have been built closer to the port, like the Nasmun Parkway Industrial Park or somewhere around that area to cut down on traffic through Suffolk. His answer?
I'm sorry, sir, that ends your time.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead. It's all right.
This was this last thing.
Quickly.
I would, I would like for, I would love, I would love for.
I know, give him a break.
I would love for, at last, Mayor Dooman, Vice Bennett, and Council, please turn around, take a look at that seal behind you. In the middle is a peanut, peanut, which was put there signifying the importance of the peanut and the economy of the city of Suffolk. So we need to stop rezoning our farmland. You can eat peanuts, but you cannot eat warehouses, rooftops, or solar panels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Dawn Marie Brittingham, 7295 Harvest Drive, representing self regarding school safety.
Good evening again, Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor, and Council, and Major Bowie. I want to thank you for helping me to understand what your team has been doing for our community. I appreciate your presentation so much tonight, and I appreciate your humble responses to the questions tonight as well. But as my husband pointed out to you, you have planned, you have planned to offer your training to anyone who asks for it. It would have been nice if the superintendent and the school board chair had been present tonight to hear your plan. Perhaps they could have asked more about the training and know who would be able to provide it for them. Thank you, Councilman Fawcett, for asking the questions that you did tonight of Major Bowie. Thank you, Mike, thank you, Mayor Dooman, for all that you do for our city. I am truly concerned still about the school safety issue, and I hope that the city council will take under advisement that they need to push and put pressure onto the school board to make sure that we have what we need. It sounds to me like Major Bowie has a great plan on how to train not only his police force, but anybody in the school system that would be willing to let him walk in through the doors and provide training for administrators and teachers and students. And I think that in the current atmosphere that we've had specifically with Uvalde, Texas, it would be wise of us as a city to make sure that our most vulnerable, particularly our students and teachers, are well-prepared and protected in case of the awful event something were to happen. Thank you.
Dawn Lassiter, 200 Military Road, representing self. Dawn Lassiter, 200 Military Road, representing self regarding Port 460.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Dawn Lassiter, and I live at 200 Military Road in the Lakeside subdivision of Suffolk. I'm a graduate of the public school system. I come from a working-class family. I've lived in Suffolk for most of my life, and I have family that goes back here for several generations. I have deep respect for the Williams family. I don't dispute their right to sell the family farm if that's what they want to do. As for the developer, I will concede that Matan Companies is a reputable firm, that it's done excellent work in other places. If they want to come and build warehouses in Suffolk, they are welcome to do so in areas already zoned M2. But I adamantly oppose the rezoning of the Williams Farm property from Zones A Agricultural and B2 General Commercial to M2 Heavy Industrial even with conditions. I've been told that this is a wonderful project, that it will be done in phases, and that the complete build-out will take 10 years, maybe more. If this rezoning request is approved, by the time the project is completed, we will have a new city council. The developer will be gone, and the Williams family will have moved. But the people who remain in Suffolk are going to be impacted by this for years and even generations to come. I repeat, I don't object to Matan Companies building warehouses on Route 58 where the land has already been zoned M2. But I don't want warehouses so near residences, a community house, a veterinary clinic, a funeral home, and schools. They don't belong there. Please vote no to this rezoning project. Thank you.
Mia Byrd, 149 West Washington Street, representing self regarding downtown safety and development.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and city officials. My name is Mia Byrd. I live at West Washington Street downtown between Main Street and Saratoga. What I have to say has to do with safety and the revitalization of a once-thriving historic and dynamic area, but mainly what I have to say has to do with accountability. I moved downtown in June of 2016 from Ghent in Norfolk. I'm originally from Virginia Beach. I am what some lifelong Suffolkians lovingly refer to as a come here, not a from here. I love Suffolk. My fiance and I plan to buy a home in Suffolk when the market evens out a little bit and is less competitive. I moved here for several reasons, but mainly the historic building in the apartment I live in has a lot of original architecture, and historic spaces have much more character than, you know, all the new box places. Downtown offers good food scenes, people travel from across the states to go to sushi yaka, live music, the taste of Suffolk, and easy access to other cities like Smithfield and Norfolk. In six years, I never felt unsafe walking to restaurants downtown or walking my dogs at night. I do now. In the last six to eight months, the fabric of downtown has changed, and not in the positive way so many are planning for and hoping for. It's palpable and an unsettling change. It's obvious. Violence has increased beyond measure. On Saturday, June 18th, more than 40 gunshots rang out on Saratoga and Washington. Buildings were hit. Shockingly, no one was reportedly hit, reportedly being the key term. On July 8th, more than 30 gunshots rang out again on West Washington and Saratoga. I called 911 four times. I'll be happy to share my phone log with you. The first two times, no one answered. The third time, they said the police were on the way. The fourth call was made because after 10 minutes, no police had arrived. We're less than a half mile from two police stations, and it took 10 minutes. I understand everyone's understaffed, but 10 minutes and a half mile or less? I could have run to both and back, and I'm not that fast a runner. A target demographic to move downtown is young adults and families who will potentially set roots and directly benefit the economic growth. We have them, but they are making a mass exodus. A neighbor, a young mother, shared nanny cam footage from one of the reference nights previously. You can hear gunshots and see the flashes as she army crawls across the floor, a phone dialing 911 in one hand, and the other retrieving her infant from the crib and crawling back out. She has obviously moved. In last Tuesday's Suffolk News Herald article, "The Leader We Trust to Keep Us Safe Minimized How Bad the Gun Violence Actually Is." In reference to statistics, gun violence has doubled since 2017 in Suffolk. The stats and comparatives are available in Suffolk PD's annual reports and on the FBI's website. Sensationalism is exaggeration. Nothing about the number of shootings is exaggeration or false. In fact, they're probably underrepresented. No one can sensationalize nearly 30 rounds of shots and police taking 10 minutes to respond. That's just a fact. Two people were shot less than seven days ago, one at 3:30 in the afternoon. It should be the topic of each day until violence decreases instead of continuing to rise. So what does the future of downtown Suffolk look like? The tornado of 2020 wreaked havoc, tore down 100-year-old buildings, and turned a historic corner into an eyesore and already uncuffed blocks. But silver linings do exist, and what came from it was a great plan for an entertainment park to kick off a long-overdue revitalization effort that could draw people back downtown, but not if it feels wholly unsafe, not if people are being shot in broad daylight, not if those who are sworn to protect our community that we trust minimize the massive public safety issue we have. Some historic properties are being converted and look great, but I wouldn't move there now. Between the trash, the dilapidated surrounding buildings, and the violence, who would? When you look back at the photographs marking history, it's truly heartbreaking to stand in real time and watch all of this. Where is the accountability? Building owners are not being held to a standard. The leader of public safety is seemingly lowering the standards. No one is really being held accountable for the issues that cause urban areas to fail. These issues aren't unique to Suffolk. Yes, there is a nationwide and regional crisis, but we must do something where we are now. Ignoring the problems will have very serious long-term economic impact. I'm here because I love Suffolk. I'm here because I intend to stay in Suffolk. I love its history, but enough is enough, honestly. Someone, somewhere needs to do more than what's being done now before the reputation of a historic downtown with vast potential is too far gone, before downtown businesses that already have a draw leave. Your plans and economic development's efforts will all be for naught. Enough is enough. Thank you for your time.
Rich Peterson, 1104 White Heron's Lane, representing self regarding Port 460. Rich Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. I'm here to speak this evening about the opposition of the 460 logistics project. I live at 1104 White Heron's Lane, which is part of the Heron's Point subdivision, which is located about seven tenths of a mile south of the intersection of 58 and Pitch Kettle Road. I'm sorry this evening, I don't have any additional facts, figures, or research that you haven't already heard in the past, but what I can prevent or provide you is some ground truth and feeling from your constituents. So I serve as a vice president of the Homeowners Association for Heron's Point, and we have approximately 90 families in that subdivision. Everyone that I have talked to, and it's been a big topic of discussion at our homeowners' meetings monthly for the last couple of months, people are very concerned about the quality of life in Suffolk decreasing as a result of this project. Now, we could, really, it kind of revolves around several key issues. Number one is increase in traffic. You've already heard that. That increase in traffic is also connected with safety. We have multiple schools in the area of this rezoning that's going to occur. That's a big concern, especially because there's a lot of folks in my neighborhood that do have young children, and they do ride the bus to and from. Traffic, that kind of goes without saying. Without the proper infrastructure build-out on 58 and 460, we're going to see nothing but additional traffic jams, and we're enduring those every day now, as well as a possible increase in our taxes to develop and implement this additional infrastructure to support this new endeavor. So I'd like to just impart with you is, please be mindful of what the voters are thinking and what they're really concerned about in their daily lives as you approach this moment and make this decision. Thank you very much for your time.
Casey Hedrick, 113 Holland Road, representing self regarding Port 460.
Good evening. My name's Casey Hedrick. I just want to make a correction. I reside at 1312 Holland Road in Suffolk. Prior to signing up to this as a speaker, I told myself over and over, my voice really doesn't matter. No one wants to listen to me, anyway. And although that may be true, I have every right to stand here today, as do my fellow citizens of Suffolk. I found myself watching our mayor's Facebook Live from last week and heard him essentially encouraging those of us who have something to say to not speak unless we had new information. I heard him say, "We're tired of hearing your repetitive complaints." Here I am, repetitive complaints, because they're not being heard and they're not being discussed. How dare you try to quiet us? How dare you attempt to guilt us into not letting our voice be heard because you don't How dare you attempt to guilt us into not letting our voice be heard because you don't want to stay here all night? I think those of us on this side of the room will fight day, night, and weekend against this project. As this process continues to go along, I become increasingly questionable about what our city leaders are doing and/or the motive behind what they spend their time doing. During the public hearing last month, it was verbalized our mayor had questions that needed to be answered regarding this Port 460 project. You've expressed you've been busy meeting with the port and the state. Why have you been working so hard on this in the last several weeks to make this happen? What's the urgency to get this passed against the clear and overwhelming opposition of your constituents? I think it's safe to say we all work a little harder and become a bit more productive when we see some sort of reward or benefit out of a particular end result. So my question to you is, what is your reward? What is your benefit in working so hard to get this done? My next questions would be, what are you doing to address the increasing gun violence in our city? Glad to see I'm not the only one who sees it on the news or hears it. What are you doing to revitalize our downtown and bring worthwhile tenants to the vacant buildings? What are you doing to address the homeless population in our city? What are you doing to ensure our public transportation system can efficiently and effectively transport our citizens to their jobs? What are you doing to ensure Suffolk is a safe city for our children to play and grow up in? What are you doing to address the food desert that citizens are mentioning at meetings? What are you doing to make your residents of Suffolk want to stay here? It doesn't seem like there would be much time for you to pursue those questions when you're so heavily focused with this port, or the state, or the developer, or whoever else you're meeting with to make this happen. Why are you not working just as hard and aggressively on these kinds of issues too in our city? You've also mentioned this project should be not a burden on the taxpayers. Spoiler alert, we are your taxpayers and it's already a burden. You've also mentioned you don't have all the answers you need, and you also mentioned the possibility of yet another tabling. This is basic one-year-old education. Stop trying to make the square fit in the circle hole and vice versa. This location is the square and this project is the circle. It simply does not fit, no matter the road improvements you feel like you can swindle or scrounge out of this project. There are other properties more fit for this project. Please, work aggressively on finding a project that does fit this property in a way that will enhance the lives of the citizens, not destroy it. You also continue to make statements like, "Other agencies will do it," or "There are plenty of other agencies who have to make sure it's okay." Is this kind of leadership, are you proud of this? It's absolutely negligent, in my opinion. It's very concerning as a citizen to continuously hear this is part of your plan to make sure this project passes. Also, I know the large conversation around traffic is focused directly on the Pitchkettle Road, Kings Fork Road, 460 corridor. And while I have a tremendous amount of empathy for those folks who are fighting this fight, you aren't talking about the impacts this will have beyond those roads. I reside on the Holland Road 58 business. I know I don't have a fancy traffic study to present to you, but I can tell you the truck traffic in particular has significantly increased over the past few years. Although my dog, who sits in our front window keeping an eye on things, enjoys the waves and honks from the traffic, I have to remind him the traffic isn't really our friend. For example, tractor trailers are using spots on Holland Road to make U-turns. Trucks are just making it under the train trestle. Some of those trucks actually don't make it under the train trestle. Trucks are turning onto Lake Cahoon Road, which of course is posted with signage and going wherever they go from there. Sometimes they park and sit in the turn lane for whatever reason. There's also an increase in cars who, shocking, I know, aren't following the rules. They're speeding around the slower-moving trucks via the center turn lane. This will be fatal eventually. The traffic issues sprawl outward into Main Street, Godwin, 1332 Indian Trail, Buckhorn, Manning, Bethlehem, Turlington, Constance, Washington, just to name a few, and they are getting...
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time has expired.
Okay, well, stop suffocating us. Thank you.
Doug Smith, 1406 West Princess Anne Road, Norfolk, Virginia, representing the Hampton Roads Alliance regarding Port 460.
Good evening, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Bennett, members of council. As Clark said, I'm Doug Smith, President and CEO of the Hampton Roads Alliance. I'm going to comment on the opportunity presented to City Council by the Port 460 Logistics Park, then make some comments about the realities of Suffolk being a host community of the port, and then wrap up by saying the alliance is here to help you all as you move forward. The Port 460 project represents an opportunity to shape the future of the city of Suffolk by approving a Class A high-quality industrial-based development. The project is ideally located to successfully leverage the Port of Virginia, and Matan is the type of high-quality developer that comes to your city when your community is executing well. The Port 460 project is the type of project that we have been working to attract to the city of Suffolk and the region. The currency vacancy rate for this type of development is 1.4% for Class A warehouse and distribution, meaning there is a market demand and need for the project. And when the development comes online, it will create jobs for residents of Suffolk and expand the local tax base for the citizens, which is good news for all. In this region, we talk about the host communities for the Port of Virginia, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Newport News, because they host the actual terminals, and hosting those terminals has an impact on those communities. Some of you know that I have served as a Deputy City Manager in Portsmouth, a member of the City Council in Portsmouth, and I was a City Manager in Norfolk. So I have an understanding of the realities of playing the role of a host community. And I would argue that the tremendous success that Suffolk is having in attracting projects that support the Port of Virginia, Suffolk is now a host community as well, and the region should support your efforts to mitigate the impacts of these projects on your community. Please support the 460 project, and please know that as you move forward, the alliance will support your staff as they work to mitigate the traffic challenges presented by the growth in the 460 corridor. Thank you.
Next speaker, Lisa Jones, 5032 Kings Grant Circle, representing self regarding Port 460.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. Thank you so much for this time. So I'm Lisa Jones. I reside at 5032 Kings Grant Circle in Suffolk, Virginia, and I oppose this rezoning request for the construction of Port 460 Logistics Center. Now, yes, I've spoken with you guys previously, so I'm not going to re-explain my concerns on overcrowding, or traffic, or negative impacts, auto accidents, nothing like that. But I did not share some other concerns. Over 915 new housing units are already approved, planned, and under construction within a five-mile radius of the projected site for Port 460 by July 1, 2023 opening. The residential and retail construction on Godwin between 58, Kings Fork Road, and Hillpoint, as well as 370 units going up at Halsted Reserve and the 55-plus community that's known as Vineyards at Halsted, on Pruden 460 at Halsted Boulevard. Population growth from these two communities alone is going to grow exponentially before this Port 460 is even operational. At an estimated rate of about 2.20 people per unit, this very small area expects growth of approximately 814 people and at least 650 cars, plus the accompanying incidentals of those people, school buses, visiting nurses and hospital services, emergency services. That's one. Number two, Kings Fork High School and Kings Fork Middle Schools are within the zoned area for all of the new construction that's being planned. However, Elephant Fork Elementary School is one of six elementary schools within that five-mile radius I mentioned. It's still overcrowded, and it's still using classroom trailers as portable learning space. These new populations that I just talked about are expected to rent units within this five-mile radius in the new rental communities on Godwin, Hillpoint, and Pruden. They're usually young families with pre-K and elementary-age children, but you haven't mentioned that. Someone else mentioned that Godwin 10 and Pruden 460 are designated hurricane evacuation routes that are specifically targeted to divert residents quickly out of the downtown Suffolk area. In the event of a weather emergency, large commercial vehicles can negatively impact the city's ability to evacuate the residents out of this area quickly using Pruden and Godwin. Also, the City Council recently approved funding for the library and Suffolk Festival Park to attract residents and visitors to downtown Suffolk. Both of these destinations are primarily accessible via Godwin 10 and Pruden 460. Port 460 is going to be a 24-hour operation, so this is going to interrupt the Pruden 460 traffic that heads downtown to those newly-approved recreational and social event areas that the city has already earmarked money for. Large public events are going to result in diverting traffic over to Godwin 10, which is going to bottleneck at the intersection of Godwin and North Main, right in front of Mayor Doeman's dealership, kind of similar to what happens when you go to Virginia Beach in the summer. Lastly, there was a comment that was made during the mayor's Facebook Live session that is actually essential to why I oppose this rezoning request. The comment alluded to, "I really cannot tell the property owner that he cannot sell his own land." Honestly, I agree with that. You can't. I agree that the City Council cannot tell any property owner that they cannot sell their land. However, no one here is asking the City Council to prohibit Mr. Williams from selling his land. On August 17th, Mr. Williams explained his rationale and his efforts to sell his land to other friends and farmers. He's a longtime resident whose family has worked the farm. His children do not plan on returning to Suffolk to continue his legacy. He's had other options, but Matan courted him nicely. They spent a lot of time helping him with this pitch. I respect Mr. Williams' feelings and his reasons, but I'm asking the City Council to vote against rezoning because I have similar hopes and dreams. I brought my property with a plan to live here until I die, to bequeath my home to my relatives that want to live here, if there are any, to support my small town and my community. Now, I may be new to Suffolk, and his dreams are actually the very same dreams that I have, as well as the 1,947 other individuals who took the time to sign that petition. And the neighbors here want that very same chance to grow old in their homes in this semi-rural area of Suffolk. They also want to pass down their...
I'm sorry, ma'am, that concludes your time.
Well, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Delegate Clinton Jenkins, 438 North Main Street, representing self regarding constituent concerns. Delegate Clinton Jenkins.
Members of Suffolk City Council, good evening. I'm Delegate Clinton Jenkins. I represent the 76th District in Virginia's House of Delegates, which is 85% of Suffolk, and the remainder is in the city of Portsmouth. I'm here this evening because I received a number of texts, phone calls, and letters from residents living in Suffolk regarding the Port 460 project. And I want to reiterate what I said in early August, that the state does not have any funding in the current budget for the Port 460 project. I reiterate, the state does not have any funding in the current state budget. There is no funding. If someone tells you something different, I kindly ask you to have them show it to you in writing. Because if you recall, the budget was done before this project came to light. There currently is no funding in the state budget for this project. And if they tell you something different, get them to show it to you in writing. And as you are aware, that the ports, the city of Portsmouth does not receive any tax revenue from the ports, and Suffolk does not receive any revenue for road repairs from the ports. So I kindly ask that you work out a plan that's beneficial for the city of Suffolk and its residents when it comes to the Port 460 project. Thank you again.
Barbara Nelson, 101 World Trade Center, Norfolk. Barbara Nelson, 101 World Trade Center, Norfolk, Virginia, representing the Port of Virginia regarding Port 460.
Good evening, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Bennett, members of City Council. Pleasure to be with you this evening, Barbara Nelson, Vice President of Development and Transportation Policy with the Port of Virginia. I spoke at the Planning Commission meeting in July. I was at your August City Council meeting, and I'm here again this evening on behalf of the port. Economic growth can reveal transportation system challenges, and I think that's become apparent with a lot of the discussion on the Port 460 project. And I'm here this evening to reconfirm the Port of Virginia's commitment to working with your leadership, to leverage our state and federal partnerships, to identify transportation solutions, and to compete for funding to fully implement programs of improvement for Pruden Boulevard. Those types of improvements could come from funding sources such as the federal program approved in November 2021, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. It was recently, in a recent Suffolk Herald article, Senator Kane was quoted as talking about the additional funding that is coming to states and to the federal programs, and we would like to partner with the city of Suffolk to work to secure those funds to address the transportation needs for this important project. And so thank you for your consideration, and we stand by to support you and your staff.
Derek Lee Master, 1119 Fern Lane, representing self regarding the Port of Virginia, Port 460.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and all my fellow Suffolkians. I've lived here for 11 years. I used to live in Virginia Beach. I'm the President and General Manager of CMP Global. We are based off of 460. You know, we have been in the maritime industry since 2015 in Suffolk. So we came off of Amadeo Corp. back in 2015. We finished that lease in 2020, and then we opened up right behind Tractor Supply in 2021. So since I've been here in Suffolk, and what a great city it is, and we do have a lot of people that live in this city that really care about our city just as much as I do. And, you know, for me, our company went from just myself to 32 employees, which over 55% live in Suffolk. And we pay wages above $45,000 a year, and we're also increasing. We also have robotics coming for manufacturing in the near future, in the next five months. We want to continue to build that legacy for everyone that lives in Suffolk. To also state that, you know, I am pro-business wholeheartedly. I want Suffolk to grow. But I also understand listening to all the other individuals that live in this city. Believe it or not, I'm a young guy, but I have five boys. Three have graduated from Kings Fork, one's at Kings Fork, and one homeschooling. So I understand what the parents, grandparents are saying. You know, that's something that we need to definitely look at for the Port 460 project. But I am for it, and I'm going to tell you why. You know, I look at a business thing that a lot of my mentors always say, either you're growing or you're dying. And the same thing goes through cities. And if you look at Detroit, they were one of the biggest cities in the world. They had everything going for them. And then they started making bad decisions, and they went from a 45-mile-wide city to nothing. They have homeless, they have poverty, and it's, you know, homes being destroyed, et cetera. I'm not saying we're in that by no means, but what I am saying is Suffolk has always been the place... But what I am saying is Suffolk has always been the place to grow. And, you know, my company has been able to do that. And I don't know exactly which warehouse partners would join into there, but distribution and manufacturing in today's world is not low-income jobs. Our average warehouse employee makes between $18 and $23 an hour. That's pretty good paying wages when it comes to distribution for hourly. And then our salary continues to go up from there. I think one of the keys, I think, the port is trying to show everyone, and myself, because I learned this at a young age, is Suffolk can reach 85% of the U.S. population within two days. And that, everyone, makes it a good opportunity for Suffolk to expand its resources throughout the rest of the United States. And that's a key for an economic driver. So, you know, I feel like we need to capitalize on great opportunities, but we need to be cautious. We need to vet everything, and we need to make sure we protect our homeland here and doing the right things. You know, we have to stay competitive. The city of Savannah in Georgia, they're eating us up right now when it comes to economic driving. We want all these high-paying jobs for Virginia, but we have New Jersey and Savannah, they're taking the distribution jobs away from us. They're taking manufacturing jobs because they're opening up their properties. And I think that's another big opportunity for just the state of Virginia to stay competitive through the other states that we are competing with, to have high incomes for our citizens, to grow our cities, and to grow our kids' future. Because ultimately, my job is to retire one day and pass my businesses down to my kids. And I'd like to see my grandchildren and not have them in California or Savannah or New Jersey, and them be all around us because we have paying jobs in Suffolk that will bring them here. And that's really all I got to say. And at the end of the day, either we're growing or we're dying, guys. And that's all I have to say. And I appreciate all the intelligent people from Suffolk here, because you did open my eyes on a few things. And I'm grateful to be in this city because I got a lot of smart guys and women in here, and I really appreciate what you guys have had to say today. But I'm not against you, I'm with you. I just want us to find a common ground where we all work together. Thanks.
Catherine Cross, 853 Hillpoint Boulevard, representing self regarding Port 460.
Thank you for your time. I would just like to point out, as you recall from the public hearing at the last city council meeting, it was noted by several of you that you had never seen in your entire career as city councilman such opposition and such involvement. You should heed that. You should heed what is being said to you resoundingly. Your constituents are resoundingly against this project. And the reason is, it's a lousy location. It is a lousy, hazardous location for this project. Suffolk is huge. There's room for this elsewhere. Listen to your constituents. Do you know how happy you would make your constituents if you listened to what we're saying to you resoundingly? We trust that that is what you want to do. We appreciate your time.
Reggie Love, 1145 White Heron Lane, representing self regarding Port 460. Millicent L. Dove, 852 Colonel Mead Drive, representing self regarding property owners' rights as they relate to rezonings.
I'm stiff getting up here. Good evening, council members and Mayor Duman. Mayor Duman, I too listened to your Facebook Live the other day. I did not hear what the other lady heard, but I listened carefully. And one thing you said was, I remember, was the government's responsibility, and somebody else mentioned that too, to allow the citizens to do with their property as they please. It's not, you said it's not the government's responsibility to dictate what they want to do. They are allowed to do what can legally be done. And I agreed with you. They can do what legally can be done. However, you all are the ones that are going to say what they can legally do. As it stands, it is B2 and agricultural. You, your group of people are going to change the rules on it. You're going to rezone it or choosing to rezone it. This is all about, as somebody else said, quality of life. Neighborhoods are there. It's very close to my neighborhood. It's very close to the new neighborhoods they are building around me, and it's all about quality of life. There are more rural aspects or places in Suffolk that this could go. To me, I cannot see it there, and I know it's something that I just don't want there, but it's not just not want. I thought about it, and I thought, once you rezone that agricultural land, which the other gentleman said is very valuable now, and I agree. And I also agree with the other man, because I've been reading the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal about the recession and different things going on, and they are also predicting a decrease in truck traffic, truck handling, transportation. But once it's rezoned, we no longer have a farm. We no longer have that farmland. You cannot put it back. It will just be gone for eternity. And you said that you had to keep your citizens covered, and I consider us your citizens too, not just the one, the one that wants to sell for the highest profit. Because he did say he spoke to the tree farmers or the tree farm, and that they couldn't offer what the Matten Company offered. So he did say that. He's looking out for the maximum profit for one person, one of your citizens. You have a lot of other citizens around here, too. And you said that you had to look, you had to be concerned with our finances, our safety, our welfare, and other things. And one of the things, and you can correct me if I'm saying this wrong, is the environment. Okay? The environment is what concerns me the most. From what they predicted, it'd be thousands of trucks a day, thousands of trucks. The rest of the world is trying to clean up, in theory. We're trying to go green. We're moving towards electric cars and everything, yet Suffolk wants to bring in diesel trucks. They want to bring them here, not just deal with the ones we already have. We are actively seeking to bring this air pollution. We're not moving towards charging stations or electric cars or things like that. We need to move forward, not backward. Don't take us backward. Respect our quality of life and your quality of life, and keep our farmland, our farmland, and place this company elsewhere if they want to go in Suffolk. Okay? Please don't put the wants of the one, and the wants, when I say wants, is because Farmer Williams wants the most he can get for his land, just like we all do and everything, over the needs of the rest, the clean air for the rest of us. Please do not put the wants of the one over the needs of the rest. Thank you.
Kelly Hengler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, representing the Chukatuck Eclipse Hobson Heritage Civic League regarding community.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Butler Barlow. Sorry, I always pause at that for some reason. My name is Kelly Hengler. And, you know, I want to congratulate the Commonwealth of Virginia for bringing Z-Box to Virginia, to Arlington. But this is not Nova. This is Suffolk, Virginia. And as Z-Box would like to come here and the whole Z-BA family and take a look at everything that we have for land here, and help us to understand in the middle of our comprehensive plan review, look it up, Z-E-B-O-X, okay? They're innovators, they're port generators, they're venture capitalists. We love them! It's making the whole globe go around, but it does not make 460 the next shiny rock. We have a shiny rock. It's called North Suffolk. We have, and thank you for being here today, since you have taken a lot of time that citizens don't have access to all of our people who are on the Diaz's by sitting in the back of the room. I'm not contentious to you. But I will tell you something about Constantine, and I will tell you something about international law. This is not a capitulation, and I do not mean in a military term, of our city. We do not give up our sovereignty as individuals. We do not give it up as our land. We do not give it up as our city. We do not give it up as our state. We have done a beautiful job of having M2 areas. We have Planters Peanut, which is now owned, if you want to play big dog, little dog, okay, by Hormel. We have major global tactical strategic intelligence, and guess what? We also have the Maraya Subsea Cable. Virginia is growing because Virginia grows. That should be our T-shirt. Okay? We have the Maraya Subsea Cable. Savannah, Georgia has Atlanta, Georgia. We have no large city here. We have what is happening in Virginia, and it grows, including our farms. Thank you. As people have mentioned, I came home from California. You do not want here to be, to Luray Lake in California. Dried up, droughted out, no food to be grown anywhere. And by the way, this group of amazing people here and those watching at home have dug up all the projects that Port of Virginia, Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, and Virginia Economic Development can help us with. Thank you. You can help us with the bypass around Whaleyville, which is in our proposed comp plan. You can help us with the bypass around, around over, I'm sorry, Oakland-Chukatuck, and get them some sanitation, please, before using another tax dollar for another developer to put in sanitation and water you have not done for that community. We are strong here. We do recognize that Senator Kane was over in Norfolk, and we also recognize that Norfolk and Portsmouth are currently under air quality monitoring for the first time ever because of coal ash. Because our community members are very, very dedicated with DEQ, with Army Corps, with all of the resources that we have, and we're sorry, Vice Mayor, that we have not mentioned also out there Cypress District, okay? Downtown Suffolk, we love you. But we have some issues that we have been standing around waiting for that ketchup bottle cap to go. And we have federal money that needs to be designated to these existing entities, and please, do you hear me, USDA? Can you bring a team down here? Our farmers need you. We need to be able to grow peanuts to leave that peanut on the side. We need to grow the food that we feed to our poor. Did you know that Nansman County was based on poor farms and giving to the poor? You're not taking our heritage day and night, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Please come down here, Z-Box. I'd like to talk to you. We have wonderful things that we need for our community, and we thank Massimo, who's also another food producer, international, who took his idea, who took Chocfula Nucks and kept it alive, thank you, sir, on the 58. But we have to make the people on the 58 whole, not come dig a hole on Port, over here, Port 460. Wrong idea, wrong place. And I'm not saying we should shove anything over there because it's being built. We have now examined every borough in the city of Suffolk, these people, and more at home. We have written letters to the Army Corps of Engineers. We're going to write some more to DEQ, Coastal Zone Management. And you know what I found out? There's an environmental board that goes to Z-Box. Oh, yes, we got their address. Thank you. We want you here. If we're going to go global, we're going to go big.
I'm sorry, ma'am. That concludes your time.
Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Our final speaker this evening is Terri Taylor. Terri Taylor, 2872 Prudential Boulevard, representing Global Millers regarding Port 460.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I represent the small truck stop on Prudential Boulevard, and thank you very much for the education. I found out about this project about a week ago, and I was told I should have been notified before that, but I did not know about it. My store manager, Lynn Jenkins, by the way, I'm the Senior Director of Operations for the Virginia area, for the company. And, you know, you think I'm standing in front of you guys, I'm supported by the trucking industry, but I'm also supported by the local population as well. And we're here to serve both and have been for quite some time. So I found myself on the fence in the beginning, like a lot of trucks coming through, a lot more people coming through altogether. But I'm starting to realize something differently now, and what it is, the, I looked at the plans for the development, and the plans for the development include a competing truck stop down the road that is perfectly positioned at the exit of this warehouse facility, the warehouse where, if you want to call it that. And it also includes the closing of the median that allows trucks to currently turn off of the road onto our lot. If the current road, the way it's proposed now, goes through and is approved, there's no way a truck could get into our lot coming from, away from Highway 58N, or they couldn't leave our truck stop and go straight back onto the main highway. What does that mean for local traffic? What it means is trucks are going to be forced to do U-turns if they stop into our station, have to go down the road, take a right out of our parking lot, and somehow make a turn, which might be, based on what I'm looking at, the only way to do it is go into someone's parking lot. It's impossible for an 80-foot truck to make that turn unless they get off the road and come back on. And there's no opportunity for them to do anything else if they find themselves in my lot. Most of what would happen is we would just die. Our truck stop would be a desolate place without trucking to support it because no trucker would go there. And why would he? They wouldn't be able to get in and out of my lot. Now, in addition to the trucks, it's the traffic as well. The traffic couldn't get in. If so, if a car came into my lot, they would have to make that same U-turn. Nor could they get into my lot from the left. So we're looking at about a 50% decrease in revenue from my small lot. Now, on the other hand, the developers proposed this other lot, and they're going to allow them full access with a light, to have full access to the trucks and the traffic. So I'm standing before you opposed to the rezoning, and not just for the reasons that it serves our best interest, because we're doing okay. You know what? We've done okay for a lot of years, and I suspect we will going forward. But if this progress and this plan goes in as it's written, it'll be the death knell for us. We won't be around, and you'll have an empty lot where another warehouse could go. And I don't think anybody in this room, including you, want that. So you'll have a property that no one can get in and out of. So I am opposed to the 460 rezoning for financial reasons, because we can't make it work, and for the reasons that I've heard here tonight. Thank you for the education. I had no idea. I mean, I'm about a week into this and learning about this project, and so tonight I've come a long way in understanding. I understand the impact financially, the tax base. I understand all that. But it doesn't look like, from where I'm sitting, that you've got any consensus with the constituency, nor do you have any kind of plan that says, if this doesn't work, what do we do? How do we keep this in the Suffolk area, and how do we make our constituents happy at the same time? I don't see, I see one plan, and I don't see anything else in front of me. But I wish you the best. You got your hands full. That's all I got to say. Thanks for your time.
That concludes the non-agenda speakers, ma'am.
Hey, thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move to new business. Do you have any additions to tonight's agenda?
No, Mayor Duman.
Since we have no new business, are there any new business items that require action? Since we have no new business, are there any new business items that require action in the City Council for consideration? Moving right along, we'll go to announcements and comments. And at this time, we'll ask if interim media community relations director Jennifer Moore has any announcements.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. The Suffolk Department of Public Works advises a contractor will begin bridge improvements in the 2300 block of East Washington, a street starting September 12th. The work will require lane closures resulting in moderate to heavy traffic. One lane of traffic is expected to be open throughout the project and will be controlled by traffic signals at both ends. Oversized loads are prohibited from traveling through the work zone. Message boards will be placed to inform the traveling public of the upcoming work. The City of Suffolk mosquito control has detected West Nile virus in mosquitoes collected from Planters Peanut area and the neighborhood of North Jericho. Mosquito control operations are intensifying their efforts in these areas because of these positive test confirmations. We have increased mosquito surveillance, treatment of standing water, and spraying for adult mosquitoes. Although eastern equine encephalitis has not been detected in the city as of this moment, mosquito control wants you to be aware that this is commonly found annually. For more information about Suffolk mosquito control, contact 757-514-7609. Don't forget Taste of Suffolk is this weekend. Are you looking for great food, fabulous entertainment, and plenty of children's activities all within walking distance of each other? Then take a bite out of the annual Taste of Suffolk Downtown Street Festival on Saturday, September 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the historic downtown Suffolk. Taste of Suffolk is in its 16th year, having attracted attendees from Suffolk and all over the Hampton Roads region. Main Street will be lined with Suffolk's independent restaurants representing their signature menu items. Eaterys are offering smaller portions at nominal prices, allowing event attendees to sample an assortment of culinary creations. Merchants will be selling a variety of goods and services, and Suffolk's automotive dealerships will present a new vehicle exhibition. Festival goers will enjoy all-day entertainment with live music contests, a plant sale, plus a children's fun area. Also slated for this year's taste is a beer garden showcasing local craft brews until 8:00 p.m. in the Courthouse Fountain Park. For more information, visit tastofsufficva.com. Suffolk Parks and Rec has announced the opening of their youth winter league. Registration is opened on Thursday, September 1st, and online registration is available until October 21st. Basketball, cheerleading, footsall are all available for youth ages four to 15. Footsall is a modified version of soccer that is played indoors. For a complete listing of registration locations, visit sufficva.us/parks. The season will begin on the week of December 4th, and we are still actively looking for coaches. If you are available to coach, contact 514-7270. The Suffolk Police Department invites you to join our open house on Saturday, September 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at SPD headquarters. This is a rare opportunity to get exclusive tours of our facilities and equipment. You'll also have the chance to get to know the Suffolk Police Department family, ask questions, and talk with recruiters. Keep Suffolk Beautiful and the Suffolk Naismith Chapter of the Isaac Walton League are recruiting volunteers to participate in their upcoming Naismith Suffolk cleanup on October 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Land and water-based volunteers are still needed for this effort. For those wishing to clean from the water must provide their own kayak or canoe. For those wishing to volunteer by land will be offered maps and instructions on how to volunteer. For more information, contact 757-514-7604. Keep Suffolk Beautiful is also pleased to announce its next recycling drive for Suffolk residents, which takes place on Saturday, September 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Naismith River High School. This free event provides Suffolk residents an opportunity to properly recycle and dispose of many items, such as document shredding, electronics, paints, oils, and everything else listed on your screen. For more information, call 514-7604. Exciting news out of our finance department. Their budget document has been awarded the distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting. This attainment represents a significant achievement by the City of Suffolk. In addition to receiving this award, they also received the achievement of special capital recognition. The City of Suffolk is excited to announce the hire of three new staff members. City Manager Al Moore announced today the appointment of Nicholas Nick Langford as Director of Economic Development, effective October 22nd, 2022. Mr. Langford hails from the town of Clarksville, Indiana, where he currently serves as the redevelopment director. Langford has been with Clarksville since 2018, serving in a number of positions focused on economic development and redevelopment projects. His work focus includes tackling retail, mixed-use reconstruction, real estate development, and public infrastructure projects. Langford has a bachelor's degree in public administration from the University of Kansas and a master's degree in public administration with the focus on economic development and sustainability from the University of Louisville. Mark Furlough, Director of Parks and Rec, has also announced that Latonya Turner has been selected as the Assistant Director of Parks and Rec. Latonya has been the recreation manager in Isle of Wight County for the last 14 years. During that time, she served as interim director for nine months, and prior to that, she served as recreation supervisor for the City of Suffolk, Parks and Rec, and an assistant program coordinator for Newport News. She's active in Virginia Recreation and Parks Society and a past president of the organization. She holds a bachelor's degree in business administration and marketing from Elizabeth City State University and a master's degree in public administration from Strayer University. Latonya joins our team on September 7th, 2022. Harry Cromer, Director of Social Services, announces that Danielle Williams has been selected as the Assistant Director of Social Services. Danielle brings over 25 years of experience working in human services. She has been with the city's Department of Social Services since 2000, after previously working for the City of Portsmouth Department of Social Services. Danielle has worked in various capacities at Suffolk Social Services, most recently serving as self-sufficiency supervisor for the last eight years, prior to being promoted to Assistant Director. And as a quick reminder, that residents seeking the COVID-19 vaccine are encouraged to visit vaccinatevirginia.gov or contact the state call center to find out vaccination locations near you. And lastly, on your screen are the various ways that residents and businesses to stay connected to the City of Suffolk. And thank you, and have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to announcements from City Council. We are going to start with Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank those citizens that came out to voice your opinion and your concerns. Please know that we are listening, we were listening, and I just want to thank you for coming out and exercising that right that you have to, again, voice your opinion. I'm going to be briefed tonight with my word for the month of September is courteous, having or showing good manners, being polite. With that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'm going to take a moment, if you don't mind, and answer a couple of things that have been presented. One, the conflict of interest question. Last two weeks ago, I voted, and I had a, I was on firm ground because I had talked to the city attorney about that on my vote. I had talked to him beforehand, and I was on firm ground. But I also sent off a letter, a request, up to the Commonwealth of Virginia Conflict of Interest Office, and sent them a lot of information, talked to them for quite some time, a number of weeks, and they forwarded me a letter back. I won't go into the full detail of it, but I'll go into it briefly. And it says, Dear Mr. Goldberg, based upon the facts you have presented, it is our guidance that you may participate in the transaction involving the rezoning decision involving the Williams property. And this comes out of Rebecca Stansky. She's the attorney for the Virginia Conflict of Interests and Ethics Office Advisory Council. And so we have that on file in the city, and that's where I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Ward.
A couple of people, about a week or so ago, I'd like to thank the Bell Harbor Emergency Room for advising me to check a couple of things out. And I was at the oversea hospital, and I had sort of great people to look over me. And I just want to name the names, Ms. Haron, Kelly, Sheila, Catherine, Tracy, Kelly, and also Dr. Macaroni. Anyway, I'd like to thank them and the effort they put together to make sure that everything was A-OK. But I'll say God bless.
Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to everyone who came out to speak again tonight. We do appreciate hearing everybody's opinions. A lot of great thoughtful statements were made this evening. And again, I just want to assure everybody that we are listening. And I just would like to, I think I said this the last time, but I want to say to the other members of council, I've watched this body, listened to the concerns of our citizens time and again, and when we have people turn out and state their opinions, we do listen. And I think this particular topic is not an exception to the rule, and I hope that everyone is taking the responses that we're hearing and the conversations that we're having to heart. And I appreciate that. I know that everyone on this council is thoughtful and is doing that, and I appreciate everyone's time and efforts towards that end. And with that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Johnson.
I wasn't going to be quite that brief. Now, I guess I'll have to be brief since everybody else is. As everybody knows, I was opposed to this extension on the project that we're getting ready to vote on, but I think tonight shows me why the mayor was probably right, because there was new information that came out tonight. Every time the public speaks, the public amazes me. You know, truly, and sometimes you're off-base. I'm just saying, you know you're off-base sometimes. But overall, you're well-researched, you do your homework, and you follow the heartbeat of our community, and I'm always glad to hear it. But tonight, the most surprising one for me was Mr. LaMasters. Mr. LaMasters works for C&amp;P Global, and he already left, darn it. And he was in support of the project, but he said one thing that just blew me away. I thought, why don't we know this? And why aren't we out there securing these things for ourselves? If we can reach 85% of the population in just two days out of the city of Suffolk, why aren't we out there securing this business? I mean, this is just one company. There's 42 companies, 1,000 companies out there that would want to be in Suffolk. So we act like every time this project, we either got to grab it or lose, we're not going to make it. We've got so much potential in this city. There's no reason we can't go out there and get exactly what we want. And I'm hoping that's what we seek. No, I'm just hoping that's what this council can see, that we can do these things and do them in a way that's good for everyone, as what the city and for the people that live here. That's all I want to say. That's fine. The other thing, and I have to say this because I have the utmost respect for a young lady that spoke tonight, Mia Byrd. And we need to, this thing has overwhelmed us, and we need to refocus on what's going on in our downtown. And I'll say it to the major because I know you guys are well aware, but for this young lady to be this concerned, she was one of the first ones to move downtown, and she's always been so vibrant about what's going on then, and such a supporter of our city. We can't let this gun violence destroy what we've started. So we have got to get on board, and we, as a council, have got to be kept better aware and know what's going forward. And I know it's all over the country, and I know we can't stop it tomorrow, but this concerns me more than anything else tonight. I'm sorry. For what Mia is going through right now, and it's not only her, it's got to be others. We, and I asked the city manager to make sure we talk to the chief, make sure we see what else we can do to make this a better situation, because this is very upsetting. I know it's upsetting to everyone up here. I don't understand it all, and we don't ever get full information, but we really do need to get a handle on it. So for that, I appreciate Mia coming forward and the ones downtown, keep us informed so that we can do our job and try to make this the best city in tidewater in the country, in the state. The only other thing, Plain Air Festival is in town. It's at the Cultural Arts Center. If you're not a part of it, it's so frickin' cool. We had four artists out at our company today. We're one of the sponsors that were painting all day, and we had the most fun with them. And I can't wait to see what they're going to show up. By the end of the week, they take all of their pictures back to the Cultural Arts Center, and they have a big to do. If you want to be a part of it, call the Cultural Arts Center, and I'm sure they can get you a ticket for Friday night's event. But it really is a wonderful thing, and I personally think it's one of those things that's going to put our city on the map, because it's nationwide. There's 42 artists here painting from all over the place, and it's just a great, great opportunity. So I welcome all the artists to Suffolk, and thanks to the Cultural Arts Center for putting it forward. With that, I say good night.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'll jump on the same, piggyback thank you to everyone that came out tonight. I mean, it's, you know, I really don't like the idea to hear residents say, well, these council members are not paying attention and listening to me, or they're not paying attention to what's going on. And I haven't found that since I've been up on here. Maybe things didn't go the way someone thought it should have went. When it went a certain way, I said, you know, that's governing, that's, you know, sometimes the way things kind of shake out. We look at things a little differently than maybe the average citizen does. But anyway, we do listen. The only thing that probably is troubling, and I applaud everybody for the First Amendment, you have the free right to speech and all this other stuff, and I'll be the first to tell you, I would take all the criticism you could throw on my back. After what I came through in the last nine months, criticism is nothing to me. Period. However, when you start degradating somebody and you start saying things that are not true, and you start calling people out different names for what they're doing, it's uncalled for. If at least you're going to have something to say, you're going to send an email, you know, say it reasonably. Don't say it in a nasty way, because putting it out in a nasty way is not going to get you anywhere. The first thing that happens is they probably will swipe it and say, delete, because they don't have to read your email. None of us do. We do read your emails, but if you put it out in a decent way, it would be appreciative. We are listening. Don't throw it in the gutter just to think you're going to get our attention, because that ain't going to work. Because my name gets thrown around a little bit like a few other council members up here, but y'all are a breeze compared to what I've been through. So just keep that in mind when you're corresponding with council members. I love to hear from each one of you. I don't think anybody up here doesn't mind it. But you haven't got to throw a whole lot of gas on it at the same time, because it's not going anywhere, and it's not going to help you in the decision process. The Taste of Suffolk is downtown this weekend. We hope that the weather will play out okay. We hope that everybody could come down and enjoy the Downtown Street Festival. It's always a good time, and there's always a little after-party over in the Beer Garden area, whatever they want to call it, over there by the courthouse. That's another thing to take advantage of. Come on down. If the weather's nice, it'd be a good opportunity. I just want to go on what Councilman Johnson just said about the young lady come up and talked about calling out the different violence in the downtown area. It's really disturbing to hear what's going on. But if you'd have listened to the news yesterday when the gentleman that owns the house in Norfolk where the seven victims were shot in a party over the weekend, one of the things he said that kind of stuck to me a little bit, he says, first off, it seems like we got people that are out here with weapons that we don't even know who have them. You don't know if they have them in their pockets. You don't know where they're coming from. You don't know what's perpetuating all this. That particular night, they said a fight broke out, and things went downhill from there. When you get a large crowd like that in a situation that the house wasn't even their house to be occupied, makes it even worse. It's difficult to get your hands on the gun violence, but we've got to step up and do something. I don't know what we can do. I know that our police department is trying hard, city manager, to get the numbers up on the law enforcement positions. It's a process. It's very hard to do, and it can be a revolving door. People move on and go to other facilities, so they don't always want to stay here. And that's just the way things kind of roll. We used to have an auxiliary force in here that supplemented the police department at one time that was, I think it was a very productive group. Many man-hours were given to the city. I know quite a few of them that were in that program. I know quite a few of them that were in that program. Because we're not being very successful in getting the candidates, and it's taken the time to get them through, I'm not so sure we shouldn't go back and take another look at that and see where they might fit in to help supplement and augment this organization to help us somewhat. It can be done. Other localities are using them, and it would be a great thing. I mean, there could be a lot of things they can do. I mean, a lot of them can be trained up very well, could be doubled up in cars, could be in downtown area, could be all kinds of little things that they could accomplish that would help our police department. And I think our police department's got the expertise to kind of make that mold happen and get them back in here. So that's one method that I'd like to have you, Mr. Manager, and explore that and come back with a report on it to tell me what you can and can't do in that field, so we can see whether or not we can help these guys and gals out a little bit. And the last thing is, know your surroundings. Know where you're at, know who's around you. Pay attention to where you're at when you go somewhere at night particularly, where you park, park under a lit area. Do some things to help yourself. You get home, if you've got a driveway, hopefully it's lit. If you've got a garage, pull in, close the door behind yourself, make sure there's no one coming in behind you. Do the things that you can help yourself do. As far as the young people go, we would hope that we can find a way to educate more of these young people about gun violence, because one life in the life of a prison term is not really worth it. It's just not going to work for you. So Mayor, I appreciate the night, appreciate everybody. We'll hope to see everybody, and I'm sure we're going to see a lot of the folks repeat on the 21st. Come on down. It's not going to be a public hearing, so you get to listen to the end result here as we take it up. So we'll see you all on the 21st.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to start out as well saying thanks to all of you tonight that came out and voiced your concerns and your opinions. That was your right, and I think you did that again. So again, thank you for coming out, and as I stated before, you know, sometimes people say they don't listen. That's what we're here to, listen, and we have to wait the situation out, what is best at the end, but we do listen. So again, thank you all for coming and all your comments, and we will see what the end will be. I would like to also congratulate the three new employees, the manager that just got Mr. Langford and EDA and Mrs. Turner, Parks and Rec, and also Mr. Williams, Ms. Williams in Social Service. I guess we'll have opportunity to meet them and see who they are soon. Soon? Soon? OK. OK, see, that was new to us tonight, so we had to sort of let them know. Appreciate it. OK. And really, I think we had a very productive conversation tonight, and we're looking forward to what might take place later on. I'd like to thank Mr. Manager, you, and Mr. Lewis for really jumping on that after we had the meeting with some of the people from Suffolk Meadows about the truck traffic up there, and also others on shoulders here rose. I'm sure they'll be definitely pleased to know that something is being done about that. So again, I think that's going to help them quite a bit in what has been taking place. The Taste of Suffolk is coming this weekend. It's a good time to have good food, fun, and entertainment. So we just hope that we all be safe. It's supposed to be fun, but, you know, it's things, the way things are now, sometimes I'm here, we're afraid to get in too big a crowd, because you have all these people out here that's doing things that you go out to have a good time, and when a bullet flies, it doesn't have a name on it. So a lot of people are really getting struck by stray bullets or not aimed at the person that's been offended or affected by it. So this, we just, just stated, we have to be alert at all times, as the major said, should be looking around our surroundings and doing what we can do. I think our police are doing an outstanding job trying to keep our citizens safe. I think we need to get more involved with helping them and having people to be more vocal in what is taking place in the communities and around. Police can't be everywhere, and I don't care how many we hire, they can't stop people from shooting. None of us know who out there in that audience right now that might have a gun. That's facts. You might have something out there that you see somebody that you don't like, someone say something that you don't like. People don't do like we did when I was growing up. You might have a fistfight and be buddies the next minute. Now, you have misunderstanding, they have a weapon, seem like that's what their answer is, I pull it out and shoot you. Police can't stop that. But if we see something, I know people that have these illegal guns, or people that's doing things, we should report it. And that's how you can help the police and your community by being a voice and ears and eyes in the community to help the police out. So I hope that we all, I'm trying my best to talk to the young people, trying to talk to adults, churches, ministers, and everywhere I go, I try to put emphasis on trying to get people to understand the respect of each other, and that's what we need to do, is start respecting each other. And with that, I thank you all for coming again. See you next, two weeks. Good night.
All righty, I'll go ahead and wrap it up and try to be as brief as I can. I will be brief, I promise. Just want to talk about a couple of events the last few weeks we attended. The Councilman Fawcett was there, the Vice Mayor was there, new teacher recognition. Like to recognize Jason Bartholomew, who's a 21-year Navy vet who is teaching at Nansman River High School Personal Finance, and he was one of only, he was Teacher of the Year, but he was also one of eight in the running for a 2023 statewide award. So congratulations to him for his hard work. I admire all our educators, especially in today's environment with what they have to contend with. The first citizen award, Harry Cross, congratulations to you on being awarded first citizen this year, a lifelong Suffolk resident that has volunteered his time and resources in numerous, numerous ways. I mean, I can remember going back to the beginning of SYAA and Harry being out there, working digitally. He helped put that whole deal together. We talked about SYA today. I mean, I remember when it started, and most people don't know it, but SYAA, the first two years we played, we actually played in Nansman Suffolk Academy. There weren't any fields. And Bob Gillette and Harry Cross found a way to make that happen, and Bobby Johnson and some other individuals that really dedicated some serious time out there. So once again, well done, Harry. Attended the National Night Out Appreciation Event on the 30th. I want to thank everyone. I mean, everybody knows National Night Out's my favorite event of the year, but the volunteers, the staff, everyone that helped put that together and make that night the night it was. Thank you once again for coming out and volunteering your time and resources as well. Takes care of all of that. And, you know, we've got tough decisions coming up. There's a few comments made. Usually, I don't respond to this stuff either, but anyhow, a few comments made, and I've spent some time. I mentioned, you know, I do have a Facebook Live every two weeks. It's about as transparent as you get, and I've known to step on a body part every now and then, but I try to be pretty honest and straight up with what I'm doing. So when I have a conversation, it's a real conversation, the only thing to hide, it is what it is. And yes, I do, I did want to meet with the developer. I'll continue to meet with the developer. I'll meet with the port, I'll meet with the state, I'll meet with the president himself, whoever I can obtain information from to see what resources and what it'll take to protect our citizens, or what I need to make the best decision I possibly think I can. But whatever time I spent with them, I've spent 100 more times reading emails, and I'm looking at half a dozen people in the audience that I've met with face-to-face in my office. So when it comes down to spending time with people, I've never, I have not turned down a single human being that wanted to come to me and talk to me face-to-face, even though I still work 70 hours a week in a regular job. I mean, I'm there, give me time. If we're selling a car, you got to wait, but other than that, I mean, I'll talk to you and give you my time. So there's a lot that's going into this. There's a lot, a lot of moving parts, I say. Well, not necessarily moving parts, but there's a lot to take into consideration, you know, and I'll listen to everybody speak, and I think Councilman Fawcett alluded to it, you know, and Councilperson Butler Barlow did. I mean, we're listening. I'm listening. I've got every single email I receive. I've taken every one of those emails, and I've categorized their concerns with each one. And I can tell you what percentage, how many people are concerned with traffic, how many people are concerned with the environment, you know, how many people are concerned with safety, just write on down the list. I mean, that's most of them. The economic part of it, yeah, you can believe I'm going to talk to people from the state, and I'm going to talk to the port, because where's the money coming from? We had the best ideas in the world. You know, this cannot fall on the backs of the taxpayers. This has to be a positive, a positive revenue stream for the city as far as economic development is concerned. And if it was up to me, I'd probably continue for another 30 days, but I don't think anybody has much stomach for that one way or the other. I know this side done and that side done, so, you know, I'm fairly certain that we're going to have some type of decision in a couple of weeks. Anyhow, with that being said, there's, you know, I listen to everybody talking, and folks get emotional about it, and it affects some folks more than it does others. And those individuals that live on Pitchkettle Road, I, you know, I can feel your pain because you've got the most to lose. You really do. It's not the people on 460, it's not the people downtown, it's not me. You know, everybody else will get a little tingle if this thing goes sideways, but Pitchkettle Road will not. You know, so one of my main concerns is, you know, to ensure that that is not going to happen, and I don't know which way this thing's going to go. I mean, I really don't. I'm just saying, you know, the key is to try to look out for everyone's interest, which includes the citizens of Suffolk when it comes to revenue streams, job production, taxes. I mean, we were fortunate, we were able to reduce taxes by a couple pennies. Yeah, property values went up, and not every city did that. And I'm not going to go into a big pros and cons and all that. We'll save that for next week. So everybody that was here that, and oh, by the way, I did want to bring that up, too. Yes, in the Facebook Live, I said, "The best thing to do is to not come up here and talk if you want to be redundant, and if the message's already been said." But that was not at a non-agenda meeting. That was at agenda time. Agenda time is limited. It was 30 minutes, and we doubled it to an hour in that case. So when someone comes up and they're giving you the same message you just had, you're better off staying seated, let somebody come up with a new idea, because you can't do what you did tonight, and the agenda just goes on and on and on until somebody passes out or has to go to the bathroom or whatever. So that's why I said, if you don't have anything new to bring to the table, I would recommend that you don't speak during the public hearing, because you're taking time away from somebody else who may have a new idea, which that's what public hearings are for. Public hearings are for us to sit here and listen to what you have to say and see if you come up with something that has not been considered already. So when somebody comes up and says, I think, you know, the first person that says something has been a while back and talked about King's Fork Road, you know, and I said, "You know what? I never even thought about King's Fork Road." When I first looked at this project, it was all, we got to make sure nothing's on Murphy's Mill Road, we got to do this, we got to do that, but I hadn't thought about King's Fork Road. So that's the kind of thing that we need to do. So we'll see where we are in a couple of weeks, regardless of which way it is. If it goes or it doesn't go, I mean, I'll be OK with it. Life goes on, and we'll continue to do the best we can, and I think everybody up here will make the decision that they think is best. I really do. I don't think anybody has any ulterior motives. Nobody has any financial gain to get out of anything, you know, unless it's the 15 grand a year these guys are getting paid and ladies getting paid to sit up here and do this, which is kind of insane in itself, but, you know, I don't think anybody does this job for financial gain. So, you know, it's like Councilman Fawcett said, it's, everybody, it would be easier if everyone took that to heart, and even if someone's decision or someone's ultimate decision doesn't agree with yours, it's not being done without any self-gain or malice or any ulterior motives. It just is what it is. Anyhow, enough of that. OK, so I'm going to go to the quote and light, and then we'll be done, and this has to, another quote has to do with decisions, and this is by Daniel Kahn, K-A-H-N-E-M-A-N. He's a psychologist. And that is, "We think, each of us, that we're much more rational than we are, and we think that we make our decisions because we have good reasons to make them." And I guess it's complicated here. "Even when it's the other way around, we believe in the reasons because we've already made the decision." So you got to think about that one for a minute. A lot of that has to do, is a lot of folks have already made up their mind one way or the other, regardless of what comes after that. So that's basically what it's talking about. You make up your mind this, and then you rationalize yourself into it. So anyhow, with that, I'll say good evening, and I will ask, oh, I would like to ask one other thing in regards to Ms. Byrd and the incident downtown. I would like to get some more information on that. The three phone calls in 10 minutes done cut the mustard. I mean, I love the police department, but I don't think that's acceptable if that's what actually happened. OK, now, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to adjourn. Thank you.
We got a motion for adjournment for Councilman Fawcett and Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Would anyone like to discuss that motion? If not, prepare to vote. Council members, vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Vice Mayor, can you please cast your vote? Thank you very much.
There you go.
I want to go home.
You can hang around.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Meeting stands adjourned.